Had that obviously up to like about four fifty or something, then you take a right.
Hello?
It's probably like three.
Great, thank you. How are you?
Who is that? Who is that? Do you know them? Who is that Chuck? Oh. I guess so. Is that my snake? Amber?
Yes.
Is Chuck's wife Amber?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Okay. He looked at me first.
That's on the backhand shelter.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
In that little subdivision that's like with the, it's behind that subdivision. So Kanta buds up to the area.
Sort of between the animal shelter and four hundred was.
Yes, but Chuck himself is called the Taviat ghetto. The Kanta ghetto, something like that.
How's Melissa?
Yeah, yeah, he has plenty of them too.
That's me.
They're white.
Yes, true.
Uh, yeah, it's a little less than eight and string. Okay, and it's just those two buds, right, the streaming.
Hi Dale.
I was noticing that there's a short term rental overlay over that property that's gonna, they wanna put eighty houses on. Talked to those guys in planning, they said they have no intention of developing to do short term rentals. So I'm wondering, I know that was done a few years ago.
You talking about the one down at the end of two hundred?
Eight hundred and main, eight hundred and Main Street, it's like a little, it's right off of ninety. It's the, it's that subdivision that came in as a concept plan. And it is, has a short term overlay on it, short term overlay. And I remember we did it years ago, the planning commission said no, and then the city council said yes, and so it's got an overlay.
Yeah, so this, this is the historic one.
Well, it's kind of, yeah, it's down on the, it's like an eight hundred south and Main Street.
And I think it doesn't drop right down onto ninety one, okay.
And I guess that the people that, that wanna build are not interested in the short term overlay. So my thought is, why not, why shouldn't we take it off? Just so it doesn't, I, I have a, I.
If they wanted to.
You know what I mean? If they don't wanna do it, then what's the.
They should come in and ask for that to be reviewed.
Because, because otherwise they can do it then at some point.
Somebody can.
And I am like, so, we have so many resorts and they're gonna have short term rentals, that's where they belong. I hate them in neighborhoods. They're right around people, you know what I mean?
I know.
But you know what I'm saying, I'm never right, you know, so I don't know, it's just a thought, they're not gonna use it anyway. And they don't care about doing that, it might be nice to just pull it in case.
Yeah.
You know?
Absolutely.
You know, that's just a thought, but.
In fact.
That comes from, that's my, that's my piece of wisdom for tonight.
If it goes away, it would never be granted again, I tell you that.
Right, exactly, that's my point. Yeah.
I wonder if they're, I wonder if they'd be willing to do that.
I don't know. If they're, if they're not interested in using it, I'm thinking, maybe they would want.
Gosh, we.
It'd be kinda nice to do it. I don't know how to, you know, go about that or suggest that, but I'd like to put a bug in your ear about it.
Yeah.
Cause it's down.
I, I do agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great to have happen, actually.
Yeah.
Okay, we don't have Jenny, we don't have.
I thought Jenny was calling in.
Yeah, and Dennis wants to do the same thing.
No, he sent an email saying he's not attending.
Period. Well, he sent, he sent an email to me asking.
Well, after that?
I don't know what the sequence is.
He sent about half an hour ago.
No, that's the latest one.
And Lance is gonna be here. Cause I know, I talked to him a little while ago about a different thing, so.
He's not allowed to go on vacation.
Oh, no? It's a good thing I didn't have to go to Chicago, cause we would be in trouble. Washington County adopted an ordinance for the, the other night, I called the county attorney that wrote, she wrote the ordinance for the conservancy district, and she said it's pretty much the same.
Oh, okay, I didn't get checks from her.
Other than, because they have bigger, they have some bigger lots, so they were limiting it to, limiting the grassing to the first acre kinda thing. Cause they have a lot of big lots in the unincorporated county, but she said basically it's pretty much the same as the water conservancy. So, I just was curious, they said, any, any surprises in there? And she said, no, so. There's a bunch of cars out there, I thought it would be loaded in.
I need a big clip.
Mike? Uh, Jen, I think I was gonna talk to you, short term overlay, that's a dumb, I wasn't interested in doing short term rentals. So I'm gonna make a case, he's a sickly hearted one, yeah, but I'm asking him. He doesn't know, he never heard of it.
Wait, wait.
So it looks like.
But even though the only reason, we don't have to grant it.
No, what he's saying is that he'd like to get that order and to ask for it.
Hey, may, may this thing have a, that was check is as to no check. So see what he. So, si passes por ahí, a lo mejor puedes cogerlos.
No lo sé, es porque es el problema.
Pero los todo mañana si, si lo necesitas, pero si quieres pasar esta noche, no sé cuándo.
I am here.
Hi Jenny.
Gracias.
Hi there.
Okay.
We are going to.
Hi.
Get started here.
Okay, would it be okay if I put you on mute until I'm, that I mute myself until I'm ready to say something?
Sure.
All right, I will do that. Thank you.
I'm gonna have your mic down.
Yep, that's, that's between you two.
Okay, then I'll put myself on. Say something if I'm ready to. Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Oh, yeah, there you go. Dennis is, Jenny's on the phone.
Who took us through the last time?
Mike, I mean, not Mike, um, Dennis did. The Prairie, I mean, Dennis did.
You good for that?
Am I next? What, you don't have to.
No, I, I can do it. Wanna do it?
I'm teasing, I'll do it, I don't care. I did it once, now I'm okay. Good, no, I'm getting bored. I got stuck in there sometimes.
Carrie, we recording? Good evening, we welcome you to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Ivan City Council, held this Thursday evening, April twenty first, twenty twenty two. We greet those few of you who are here, and any who may be tuned in. Uh, we'll begin by recognizing that we have a quorum of our council members here, so that we can act on this business. One of our council members is participating by phone, Jenny, do you want to acknowledge that you're present?
I'm here.
Thank you. Um, we'll be, we'll begin by, um, with a flag salute and invocation, be led in that by Councilmember Scott. We'd ask you please to stand and join us here in the council chambers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight I would like to share slightly modified excerpts from three poems, all titled Water, because we're talking about water tonight. So from Emily Dickinson, peace is taught by battles told, land is taught by oceans past, water is taught by thirst. Ralph Waldo Emerson said, water is a celebration in my mouth, it enriches my life, well-used it brings joy, ill-used it will destroy. Then Wendell Berry said, I was born in a drought year, enclosed in the sun and the dry ceaseless wind. Veins of leaves ran dry, roots shrank, so I am a rejoicer of the rain. I love the water of wells and springs, and the taste of my roof in the cisterns water. I am a dry man, whose thirst is praise of clouds. My sweetness is to awaken the night, after days of dry heat, hearing the rain. Thank you, all of a sudden I'm thirsty. All right, I'll now poll the council to determine if we have any conflicts of interest that need to be disclosed this evening, beginning with Councilmember Anderson.
None.
Councilmember Murphy?
No conflicts.
Councilmember Scott?
No conflicts.
Councilmember Johnson?
No conflicts.
Thank you. Uh, we'll begin with our reports, beginning with a report on, from the, on the solid waste district, from Shane McDonald, thank you for being here Shane, it's good to see you.
They got this thing way up there. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Man, this thing's way up there.
We keep adding to the length of the stem.
We stand on the ceiling.
Right, we've done it a second time now.
Yeah, no, that's good. So, quick meeting, just wanted to give you an update. Um, we just ran through the basics of distribution and, and, uh, payments that went out, everything was in compliance. We did have our, uh, audit report that, uh, was good. The district is running effectively and properly with, uh, the money that they've been, um, given to provide the services to the, the county. Um, aside from one finding, that I think even Ivan City has had this finding, that some training wasn't done. Some of our board members don't have their training done, that you guys get to do yearly, it's great entertainment. Um, for the district position, you get to do an hour and a half long training, and then the ten minute training that, or twenty minute training that Dale does here in the meeting for you guys, so. Uh, we, who, they've been encouraged to, to complete that, so we don't have that finding. Um, the, as you all are aware, the district or the county is growing rapidly, um, which is causing some stress on our landfill and our supplies that we have. Uh, so we've had to purchase some more Bennys, and, not Bennys, excuse me, some more, uh, roll-offs that we use, that we see up here for the city, and, um, so that we can continue to service, uh, the cities throughout the county to, for cleanup and stuff like that, so. That is all I have for my report.
So, does the district buy those, or does, um, the provider?
The district bu, the district provides those. We have, um, been borrowing Republic's, uh, who, who has been a great partner in the landfill. Not always have I agreed with them, for the record, but in the end, we, we become, we, we are great partners. Uh, they have been loaning some to us at, at no cost, which is great, but we, we should be obligate, or we are obligated and should provide what, what we've told our residents that we would provide, and so that's the direction the board did go with, with purchasing more roll-offs.
So, does the district also own the garbage cans?
Yes, mhm.
Really?
Yes.
Will you bring me one, the, the lid split in half?
So I'll, I'll tell you how to do it.
Me too.
You go online, and, and you go to the.
This is for the public record, I want you all to digest this.
And I'm gonna get this totally wrong, so, um, I would encourage you to call Kevin, and he can give you the exact directions. But you go to the, the Washington County Solid Waste website, scroll down a little bit, and there is a banner for, um, damaged or missing.
Oh.
Trash cans, so you just put your order in there, and, uh, they, we, we have a crew that spends full time running around, either replacing or fixing trash cans, so.
Oh. Um. Thank you.
The, the wonderful wind does blow them away too, so.
And last question, so there was a, a period of kind of upheaval in, in the management structure. Is that all settled down now? Is it, is it functioning well?
Yes, so you, you met our district manager, um, I did hire that district manager, I was involved in the interviewing and, and ultimately the, the hiring of him.
He was.
He's the second one.
Yeah, okay.
The, the first one we hired, still a, a great guy, he just had a, a really good opportunity come before him, after, um, eleven or so months of working with us, and you can't blame him for doing what he feel is right for his family, so. We, I supported him in that move.
Got a good guy there, and it's going well.
And so, uh, and now our district manager is an Ivans resident as well, so.
Council, any questions for Shane? Guys, good to see you, thanks so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Filling us in. Going to our department heads, beginning with the, uh, building department, looks like Fred, are you filling in for Mike? Thank you.
He's got way too many papers there.
I know.
So, okay, I'm new to this, so I have no idea what I'm doing here, so, but, um.
Shh, you never say that.
Um, okay, so in, uh, in March, we, um, we did have, uh, eight total resident permits addition, uh, we had three, um, and then, um, other meaning, uh, probably, um, solar pool permits and, um, any other odds and ends, ten of them, uh, with nine solars and one commercial. We do have plenty more coming in, uh, they're just not totally completed yet, but we have a lot of multifamily coming in. I think I have, uh, probably six or seven that are still, uh, waiting to be fully processed, so. Yeah, that's about as much as I got, I don't know if you guys have any questions for me?
Council, Jenny?
Well, thanks.
Thank you Fred. And then to Public Works and Engineering, Chuck Gillett. Had, that thing just creeps up on you, doesn't it?
Well, it's, it's finally tall enough for you.
Yeah.
Well, good evening, it's good to be here, uh, I hope some of you maybe saw, uh, that, uh, we got a little bit of, uh, media exposure from ABC News on Tuesday, um, they actually dropped in on us, um, we were, we were trying to apply for, um, some additional funding for Highway ninety one. We submitted an application to our Congressman Stewart's office, and, uh, one of the requirements was for us to post, uh, something on our website about Highway ninety one, so we did. And the very next day, we got a call from ABC Four News, they came in, unfortunately, I was gone, and Tom Jorgensen got interviewed. But if you wanna see the interview, uh, just do a little Google search for Ivans Old Highway ninety one, and, uh, the ABC News interview should pop up, and Tom did a pretty good job of explaining why, uh, we were looking for additional funds, and it actually helps us in our application, if there's media coverage of our desire to get more money, so. Uh, that was actually pretty kinda fun little thing that happened. They actually called me back the next day, and was wondering why we're their top user from Saint George City's Water Department, and I was like, well, we're not really a user on Saint George City Water. They apparently had done some sort of records request, and looked for the top ten users in Saint George City, and Ivan City popped up there, because all of our water we get is metered through Saint George City, so, and. But it gave me an opportunity to kind of explain some of the water conservation stuff that we're doing, I don't know if she'll do the article on us and, or, or not on that. One interesting note, I went to Las Vegas last week, and, uh, met with, uh, the Water Department down there, along with a bunch of other county officials, uh, from Washington and Saint George and, and, uh, the district, and it was a great experience. Uh, one question that was asked was, uh, what was the average amount of water that went through a water meter in Las Vegas? As you know, Las Vegas likes to beat up on us as using too much water. And they said that their, so this is for a single-family residence, I asked them, what's, what's the average amount of water that goes through, uh, a meter for a single-family residence? And they said about a hundred and fifteen thousand gallons per year. And I looked up our average last year, ours, our average was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand gallons per year. Now, they're light years ahead of us in terms of water conservation. Uh, it maybe gives us an idea that maybe we can reduce our use another, at least another ten percent. Um, but, uh, Las Vegas likes to act like, uh, their water use is like half of our water use.
Yeah, I lost you, I'm back.
And, and I don't, I don't think that's a fair characterization of what's going on really here. Uh, cause they, they kinda do some water calculation gymnastics with how they release water back to Lake Mead, and, but then they get to pull it back out, and, anyway.
Can you let ABC News know that?
I told them that, I actually told her that, I actually told her that. I hope she prints something about it, it'd be great. Um, anyway, uh, one other thing on water conservation, uh, on May nineteenth, uh, the county, and you may have seen this on some advertising or something like that, cause the county's doing some big advertising. It's a statewide program, it's called Flit, Flip Blitz, uh, where they're encouraging people to flip their grass into, uh, desert landscaping. Uh, I think they've got some, uh, competitions or contests going, where somebody can get it done in their house, in their yard for free. They've encouraged all the cities to participate in this, uh, we've talked to Benny and his Parks Department, and they found about four thousand square feet of grass that they're gonna remove, what we, what we call non-functional grass, that nobody's using, uh, we kinda, it's, it's kinda wrapping around the, uh, the playground there at Unity Park, if, if you can visualize that in your mind, where the playground is, between the playground and the wall, where we have some trees already. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and pull that grass out, we're doing it, it's a Flip Blitz, it's a, it's a one-day event, and so Public Works is gonna go down and help the Parks Department, and we're all gonna wear t-shirts that were provided by the Water District, and it's a promotional opportunity to just show that we're trying to make some progress on removing grass, so. Uh, that'll be kind of a fun little event, if you guys wanna show up, I'll give you a t-shirt, and you guys can haul sod if you want to. Uh, and you're invited, I just want you to know you're invited. Um, couple other updates, uh, again, Old, Old Highway ninety one, we're, we're still trying to get right-of-way, we just still don't have right-of-way, but we also don't have enough money either.
I need to talk to you about that.
Okay.
Later.
All right. Um, but we're getting closer on right-of-way, a-actually really close on right-of-way, we've got a pathway forward, Terry's good, right?
I don't speak for him.
Uh, I hope Terry's good, he says he's close to being ready to sign, uh, but, uh, anyway, um, I, I think we'll be ready to bid here soon, uh, but we do have the funding issue, so we gotta work through that issue, as I've already mentioned to you in previous meetings. Uh, one other thing, uh, just to, just to make everybody aware, uh, Century Link's gonna be doing a lot of work in the city, they're investing about, they said about five to seven million dollars of fiber optic, um, cables that, you know, that they're trying to get to areas that they haven't had fiber optic before. Uh, it sounds like they're making a sig, you know, five to seven million dollars, that's a pretty significant investment. Uh, and, uh, I, I think it'll be good for the city, of course, if we flip to Utopia, maybe it's not good for the city, but, um, it is good to get more fiber in the city, and I think that's, uh, positive, if you see some disruptions or crews going around the city, doing, I don't know, it's not gonna be a lot of big disruptions, but there might be some people getting their neighborhoods impacted a little bit from that, so I just wanted to mention it. Um, and, um, also, the big other big thing is, we're doing HA five, uh, seal coats, uh, probably in the next couple of weeks. And, and then next month is gonna be slurry coat, coatings on the highways, on all the places that, um, we've shown you before. Uh, so look for that on eight hundred south, uh, since we didn't get in a, a really a reasonable price to do chip seal on our roads, uh, we're actually gonna use our own crews and the paver that we share with, uh, City of Santa Clara, and we're gonna overlay that road uh, with our own crews, and, uh, we think that's gonna turn out probably pretty nice. It might be, uh, a great way for us to kinda get that road, uh, uh, maintain the way we want it to be maintained. Uh, so that's eight hundred south between four hundred east to about, uh, one fifty east.
There.
Oh, so.
Yes.
Chuck, we used to have the county would come and help do that, do they not do that anymore?
Yeah, they don't do that anymore, they got in trouble doing that, um.
For helping their county?
Uh, I'm trying to remember exactly why they got in trouble. Um, it seems like, um, they were putting off their own projects to help other cities do their projects, and I think, uh, I think their leadership said, we're not gonna do that anymore.
Well, maybe if we can't get bids, we'll have to go like, the county commissioners and tell them they might need to figure that out.
I know that.
Cause you can't get bids, you can't get that type of bid right now.
I mean, literal, just to give you an idea, so we're used to paying about twenty-five cents a square foot for chip seal, that's what we've paid in the past. Maybe thirty cents a square foot, uh, we got one bid that came in at fifty cents a square foot, and the other bid came in at sixty-five cents a square foot. At that point, we're just thinking it's probably better off just to overlay instead of chip seal.
And Terry has a chip seal machine if you wanna use it.
Why didn't he give us a bid?
He don't wanna do it. But no, it's hard to get bids for those yet.
Yeah. Uh, any other questions?
Council? So, for council's information, Roger, what's his last name? With Utopia, I met with at, uh, the League of Cities and Towns meetings today, he is, uh, willing, actually anxious to come and, and, uh, give us a presentation. I told him that the council is interested in seeing that, so I'll work out a date, and he'll show up on a, on a future agenda, hopefully near future.
Okay.
Thank you Chuck.
Thank you.
Go, going to our planning commission report, Dave Robinson is here.
Mayor, council, well, that is right in your face, isn't it? Wow. Um, this week was supposed to be a pretty basic week for us, it still ended up being two hours, so. Um, we discussed the land use, uh, map and the zoning maps, um, as per what we had set up already, and then we actually reviewed all of the comment cards that we got in, we actually read them individually, turned and reviewed them. The idea was, is do they do what they were commenting already included in there, or is it something we can include? And, and tried to go through each one of them that way. Um, and so, uh, at the end of the day, we felt like we kind of covered everything we could in them, there was a few suggestions that were really out of our hands as a city to be able to, to deal with, so I think in two weeks, um, we're going to propose that this come to city council. So, I think we're at that point now, so I think that's where we're at in two weeks. We, we're gonna do our, uh, official, uh, public hearing in two weeks, and unless something crazy happens with that, then that's kinda where we stand.
So, uh, I was hoping Mike could be here, but, uh, Fred passed the word, and Mike, and Fred, and Randall, and, um, council members and planning commissioners held the three-day event in the parks, and despite the wind and the cold, we had a few people the first two nights, and when it warmed up, we had a lot of people that third night.
Yeah.
But I, that turned out to be, uh, I thought, a, a successful thing, it was a nice casual environment, people felt like they could just talk with us about.
Yeah.
About the plan, and, um, so that was good, I commend, I commend Mike for taking the initiative to, to schedule that.
Yeah, I, I believe it was, I believe it was very open for people to, to really commit and say what they needed to say, and not feel obligated, not be in such a formal setting, so, I think it was great.
Not have to stand in front of the tower mic. Any questions for Dave? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the next agenda item is citizen requests for future agenda items regarding ordinances, policies, or other legislative items. I don't have any such requests, but I would like to make a formal apology to, uh, three residents who came to our last meeting requesting to, to make such a comment. Um, they appeared, at least on the surface, to be administrative questions that were being asked, and we're trying to rein this in, it's really intended to deal with legislative requests. we're trying to rein this in. It's really intended to deal with legislative requests because this is a legislative body. So that's why it, it is intended to, to surround, um, either, either changing an existing ordinance or pointing our attention to some, something that is a problem in, in one of our policies or so forth. Uh, I invited them to come back this evening if they wished. Uh, I don't see any of them here, do I? Okay. Um, if you, if you recall, it had to do with, uh, with dust and blasting, uh, primarily. And, uh, driving home from the Dixie Center, I drove through a dust storm, so I see why they're concerned about that. Believe Chuck did an adequate job of answering the questions. Ultimately, it would've gone to him anyway. But nonetheless, it was kind of an abrupt change in, in procedure here for me to, uh, dismiss them as I did and go straight to the answer to their questions. So I apologize to them. Um, we will, we will do a more effective job of screening that because if there is, if there is a concern that a resident has over our roads or our, uh, anything like that, including dust mitigation or whatever, that really is an administrative function to, to both answer and provide a hopeful solution to those kinds of things. And, uh, so, I mean, the council could consider, if you wished, adding yet, uh, another agenda item that's just a, a free open comment, sort of thing, but, but that is not what this was ever intended to be and it sort of migrated, sort of evolved into becoming, um, a little more of that and a little less about, um, actual concerns over ordinances or policy. Okay? So hopefully you can hear me and accept my apology. Alright, uh, we have no public hearings this evening, so we're gonna go directly to our discussion items, beginning with item 5A, which is, uh, that we will continue our discussion, um, regarding, uh, an ordinance adopting and implementing regulations for landscape and water conservation for developing land in Ivan City. Uh, Jenny, would you just, um, speak so I, I know you're still on? My phone goes black.
I'm still here.
Thank you. So, uh, just, you feel free to chime in, um, to, just somehow notify me that you, you have something you'd like to, to say and I'll, I'll acknowledge you. Okay? Can you hear us alright, Jenny?
Thank you.
Can you hear us alright?
Yes.
Thank you. Alright. We continue with this ordinance. Once again, uh, uh, our sincere thanks to Councilmember Scott, who has done considerable work helping us to, um, understand the original ordinance and compare it to other, um, other ordinance, well, speci-, one specific other ordinance from Santa Clara City and comments that, um, have come out in the, the discussion in St. George. So, uh, Mike, as I understand it, we have reached the point of, um, reviewing now the multifamily and resort, um, drafts that you provided to us.
So, uh, Mayor, what's happened since the last meeting? After the last meeting, there were a number of changes that the council decided to make to the ordinance. And I did make those changes. And, uh, in the process of doing that, there were, I think about nine of them that, most of the changes, I, I, I believe I captured exactly what the council wanted, but about nine of them were modified a little bit because of the work that I did on the multifamily and the resort component, so.
Would you point our attention to those?
Okay, so if, if we look at just the, the main ordinance itself, so what we should have in front of us would be the main ordinance, which is about 13 pages long. And then we should also have a, a little four-page one, which would just be chapter seven for resorts. So if we go to line 213, I didn't do page numbers, but we have line 213, you know, so in, in that section, if you just look at the bottom, so in, in all of these nine changes, I put a note in there. Um, I, I just added "or in common areas" and I provided a, a definition.
Thank you. If, one quick question. Jenny, can, do you have a copy of the ordinance so you can keep with us on this?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Continue, please, Mike.
Okay, so, a-any problem with that?
Counsel? I don't.
So, Mike, can I, can I ask, Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So anything red is what we talked about. I mean, I was trying to read through all the red.
Right. Ri- ri-, all, all the red are all the changes and now I'm pointing out with, there's a lot more than nine things in red.
There's asterisks.
And the one with the asterisks are the ones that I just want you to make, I want you to take a look at and tell me what I'm off-base with. So, so this one on line 213 is basically, um, that water features would be located on individual, single-family and two-family lots and not as entry features to a subdivision or community, whi- which we had agreed to before, or in common areas. So common areas within the community.
This section is...
I don't know if there's resistance to that or not.
This is the single-family and two-family?
Yes.
Section, yeah.
Okay.
Is that okay? And then, uh, line 220. And so the, uh, note at the bottom is, so I added the possibility for indoor pools. So we talked at the last meeting about, um, yeah, uh, uncovered outdoor pools having a one-square-foot per square-foot deduction on grass. Covered pools, pools with, with, uh, an approved cover would only have a 25% deduction. And I put in indoor pools as well for the 25% deduction.
That's actually a good idea.
And, and so, um, is it, you, they probably won't have as much evaporation as an outdoor pool, but maybe they will because chances are it's gonna be a warmer room all year round. So just some kind of a ju-, uh, it doesn't happen very often. I'm, I'm only aware of one in the city and that's Copper Canyon. But maybe there's others or maybe somebody would wanna put it in their home.
Yeah, there's a, there's a residential up there that has one up in.
Okay. Any problem with it, with that?
Eagle Rock has an indoor pool too, but. Anybody have a problem with that? Jenny?
And one thing too, is they talked about water being splashed and moving around, not just evaporation, so I think it's good.
Okay, I'm not hearing any objections from Councilmember Johnson either. I have none.
Can I just make one comment?
Please.
So I, I kinda went through a lot of, all the comments that we've been getting in emails and I made like a little list of who said what about what. And so there's a couple of, a couple of, um, residents that are saying, "Well, why, don't count the pools against the percentage if they have a cover." Um, and I know, I know that's kind of a little bit of a theme, but I think that one of the things that I think is, if you have a cover, you're still gonna uncover it in the summer because the water's too hot. So I find myself with a cover, leaving the cover open in the summer because otherwise the water's 110. So I think the 25% with the cover is a, is a good point because even though you have a cover, you are gonna leave it off in the summer at night and you're gonna have more evaporation in the summer.
But some, some homes, cause they don't have fences or walls, they can't do that.
They can't do that, right.
Cause they're using their cover as their.
As their security.
Security.
Right, right.
But even so, it's uncovered when it's being used anyway. I think the 20, I think the 25% is actually, is actually both an incentive. Oh, by the way.
Yeah.
It's the Great Shakeout. We just had an earthquake.
Oh, that's right.
Everyone goes to the disaster box. That's what's happening. That's why you're hearing the siren.
That's right.
That is a drill that is occurring during this meeting. Carrie asked me if we should, uh, break up the meeting for it and I said, "No, we're, we're covering all these earth-shattering issues anyway, so we're having our own little..." Fred, help us with that.
Per the, uh, energy conservancy of, uh, last July, every.
Get, get, this is recording and needs to be, so get close enough so we can hear you.
So per the, the new, um, uh, water evaporation conservancy, uh, any pool that's got, that's heated, tempered, has to have a cover. So it doesn't have to be the automatic, you know, hard cover, uh, but it has to have a cover of some sort, so. Just, just so you guys know.
That's the, that's the district's.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, that is, uh, yeah, that is the, um, the, the, the new code for the, uh, the water conservancy.
Thank you.
They're recommending that, or that's?
No, that's, that's actually enforced.
Well.
Last July's.
Come on.
The, uh, the building, sorry, the, uh, energy conservancy. I, I have the, uh, the.
Oh, so, now come up close again. So this is not the cons-, the, the conservancy district. This, this is the energy code requires a cover of some kind?
Yes.
That is news to me.
Yes.
If, if you're heating it.
Yes, it's, the pool has to be tempered.
Cause.
So. If it's got a water heater in it, it's gotta be covered.
Got it, okay.
Okay. I don't know that Mike, that makes a lot of difference, but the temporary, the temporary covers are not nearly as effective as the automatic covers.
Mayor, what we had talked about in probably a couple of meetings ago about this is that we were doing a 25% deduction for a covered pool, but we identify a covered pool as one that has a UL-approved electrically operated cover. So if there's, if it's not that, then it's, we're considering it an uncovered pool.
I think that's still valid. FYI, we have one of our council members participating by phone, but my phone keeps dropping her or she keeps dropping, I'm not sure which.
They'll call back, right?
So are you calling her back?
She just did, but it went to voicemail. She was probably calling at the same time.
She probably went to the.
She probably went, dropped it, yeah. Should we all go under the desk or something?
Well, let's just get this done.
You can now hear how loud that siren is. When we had our first test back in, during Heritage Days, it didn't work. But Wilson, Carrie's husband, um, along with, uh, Bob, wasn't it Bob Morris? Have rewired it and put it back together again. Man, it sounds like it's functioning perfectly to me. I wonder how many presidents who didn't pay any attention to the signs are wondering what the heck's going on in the city?
I was just thinking about Wilson. He, he probably wants to be referred to as himself sometime. It's always Carrie's husband.
I said Wilson.
No, but I'm saying, he's always followed up by Carrie's husband.
That's, that, that shouldn't be a bad thing.
No, it's a good thing. It's just.
Okay, siren off, off we go.
Okay, Mayor, uh, so then the next one with a note is, uh, sort of lines 224 to 228. So I took that common area concept and applied it to the, um, the grass deduction for pools in a common area. Because in, uh, in, in a neighborhood or a HOA, like, that's probably where a, a pool might be if it's a community pool. So it's the same concept. Any problems there?
So what you're saying is, is if it's in a common area, the grass that would've went in a common area will be deducted accordingly? Is that what you're trying to say?
What, what, what I'm saying is if the pool is, is in a common area and there's common area grass, then the deduction from the pool applies to that common area grass.
Okay.
Th- this is kind of a difficult one.
And then, and then it would apply, if there is no common area grass, it would be a deduction on the individual lots as well.
See, that, that'd be a hard one to enforce.
It, it, I think the math might be complicated.
Yeah, it is kinda complicated.
So just take that one out?
I don't know about that.
Well, I, I think if you leave it just to the common area, you know, that makes sense. If you bring the lots into it, then it's a different. Does it? Does it make sense?
Your intent was to deal with individually-owned units in a, in a complex of some sort? To not suffer individually the penalty for there being a pool? Is that the nature of this?
No, actually, the, the way this is worded, so if, if you've got a, a pool in a common area, then it, it's going to create a grass deduction. First, a grass deduction would, would occur in the common area, but if there isn't enough grass in the common area, then it would apply to the lots. And I recognize that's problematic. I like what Lance is saying is, it just proportion, it, it would just be a deduction from the grass in the common area. If there is no grass in the common area, there'd be no deduction. If there's a lot of grass, some of it would have to go away to account for the pool. That.
And I, I could see it being problematic for some, you know, which this is, the twin family might be more problematic than the single family.
Yeah, I think, I think taking it, not, not taking it off of the individual lots, is just, just do it in the common area and just.
Okay, I'll, I'll make that change.
This is a practicality issue of enforcement, right?
Right.
Right.
Do you think though, and we would be, let's just say there's a smaller common area where we're trying to encourage a bigger pool, you know, so that people can use it, so they have a place to, you know, that's always been my thing is, we build houses, but we don't give them any place to recreate. And this could be kinda opposite for them because you want a little bit of grass around the pool maybe, but I don't know. What it, you know, to me, we're, it kinda plays against itself for some twin home projects, I would say.
Well, and, and again, the issue is, so this is for single-family and twin home.
Yeah.
But single-family doesn't necessarily just mean a single-family home. It could be a neighborhood of 20 single-family homes.
Yeah.
Within a common area with a playground, grass, pool, clubhouse, that kind of thing.
And so Mike, like, everyone's always trying to keep that as minimum as they can and so they'll make everything else smaller so they can have a little bit of grass maybe. I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to think how you apply that and I, I think it kinda contradicts what we might want them to do compared to what it, because of taking the grass out, because they don't have much area anyway. I don't know.
You're talking about taking the grass out of the individual units or taking the grass out of the common area?
Yeah. It's too hard to, practicality to.
Right, to do it the other way.
Do it the other way, but because most recreation areas in twin homes or even single-family homes that have an area, they're gonna put the pool in, but they want, maybe want a little bit of grass around there. But it's usually, the area's very small anyway. And so might cause it to.
So what you're saying is I'm gonna do a development. I'll create a common area with a little bit of grass and a pool, but now the pool's gonna take, the deduction from the pool's gonna take away all the grass.
Yes, yes.
So make, so then just, we could just strike this.
Well, I.
This paragraph.
It could work opposite the way with a bigger place, you know what I'm saying? So I don't know. Maybe it's okay. I don't, I just wanted to bring it up.
And I wanna go home before midnight.
Okay, so let's strike it then until we see we have a problem and we can amend it.
That's not a consideration.
Where's Dennis when we need him to say, "Okay, can we move along?"
Yeah, this would be a Dennis argument.
He would be like, "Let's move along."
No, he'd be wanting to... Do we, do you think we have that much of an, an issue that?
This is gonna be an extremely rare event, right?
And we're gonna look at it again and if, you know, they tell us it's becoming a problem, we can have a Flip Blitz day and take care of it.
But I do think it's, I do, do think it's appropriate to address a common area though.
So how about, so for now, so again, we're gonna look in six months. So if we just say the, there'll be a grass deduction for a pool in the common area from grass in the common area. And if we find that that's a problem, we change the ordinance.
If there's a common area, that, that implies that it's common ownership of the.
HOA or?
Of the, of the, all the, all the landscape.
All the units.
I don't know why we even have to deduct it from the common area. I think if, if there's a deduction, th- they would be subject to the same restriction on percentage of grass anyway. If it were up to me, I would just take out the, the, the common area reference for removal of grass. If, if it's the type of development that I think of when I, when I think of a common area, the, the landscape is usually, um, managed at least by the, by the association. Right, that has the com-, that has the common area as well as the other, the other yard and landscaped areas.
What I'm, do you have a question?
I just wanted to say, does Eagle Rock have an outdoor pool? Or no, maybe they don't. Maybe I'm thinking about, no, it's the Springs. It's the Springs, it's no canyon that has an outdoor pool. So that kind of a, where you, you're, you know, that's, you know, I mean, you're not gonna see too many single-family neighborhoods, I don't think, that are gonna have like a, a common area with a pool. It's more the, the townhome, you know, I mean, am I wrong?
Well, can, and we have one, two, two pools.
But, but they're, but they're not, they're not just in, in, I mean, it's part of a, a bigger.
Yeah. I think what, I think, I don't think we should worry about it right now. Because I think it kinda drives itself because most of those people doing that, they don't want much grass around it, cause they gotta maintain it, so. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe you'll have some input from the, you know, the.
So what, so just for a distinction, so we're talking about, you know, in, in this section, this is single-family and twin home. But keep in mind when, even though I'm, it says single-family, it could be a, a subdivision that's an HOA with 20 homes and then a, a common area with some facilities. So if we don't address a pool in a common area, so are, are we just, are we saying a pool in a common? So if we don't address a pool in a common area, so are, are we just, are we saying a pool in a common area is just fine by itself, we're not deducting anything anywhere?
I don't know that there's enough grass usually, I don't know.
To make a deduction.
To, to worry about it, is what I'm getting at.
And so, I'm, again, that's why I identified these nine things. I, I don't know that this is the right answer, it may be pushing it too far, so. I'm, I'm happy taking this paragraph out at this point.
So how do we do the calculation for the common area?
So, let me just throw something in here. I, I, I think if we don't make reference to individual lots or the common area as far as the deduction goes, but rather apply the same deduction that the pool is going to create from the allowable grass area for the, for the entire development or ownership that includes the common area. So that can be, that can be translated into individual yards, if that's how it goes.
Well, that, that's how I wrote it, but that's going to be hard to manage. So basically, the way I wrote it is, so let, let's say the, you're going to have a, a swimming pool in a common area, i- in a twenty unit subdivision. Uh, so there will be a deduction, right? So let's say it's an uncovered pool and it's five hundred square feet. So you're gonna have a five hundred square foot grass deduction. If the, if the subdivision's common area has no grass, then the way I wrote this is that five hundred square foot deduction would be applied to the individual lots.
Well, but they may, but they may not be individual lots. In, in most cases where you have a common area, there, there is either, either a common ownership of, of the area around the individual dwelling units. Right? I mean, they, they can be supposedly individual lots, but they don't necessarily have to be. That's why I'm wondering if you just simply apply it the same as it's applied to anything else.
Well, there's, there's single family homes that have individual lots that have common area.
Yeah, I know, but, but more often than not, if there, if there's a common area, it's associated with the development.
So let, let me ask you this, how, what would, what's your percentage of calculation on a common area? Where does it tell me that?
Nowhere.
That's what I'm getting at, so we're, we're, we're deducting something from nothing. Because we don't know what that.
Well, what, what, the way it's written, we're deducting it from the individual lots.
So I personally would just take it out, because I think it's something where we're.
Take out that paragraph?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I don't think it happens in a lot of instances.
I'm trying to think in my head where it's happened, and when it usually happens is, they don't want to install a lot of grass anyway. Because it's done by the developer and he's giving them a little tiny area and trying to meet the rules of the city. You go look at them, so. I could be wrong, maybe somebody will bring it up in the public hearing, so. Okay?
Okay. Go on. Oh. Okay, then the next one is two thirty-six, and so, we didn't set a limit, so the grass area must not exceed eight percent of the lot square footage, up to.
I'm sorry.
Up to a maximum of fifteen hundred square foot of grass area. So I just put in fifteen hundred, we had talked about having a, a limit on how much, but we didn't come up with an answer.
Washington City, I think, just adopted one or is close to, where they went to two thousand, so this, this number is, is entirely up to us to determine.
CJ's comment was thirty-five hundred, because if you had a five acre lot, his belief system is, is you was using less on that than if you had that down to R one five. I don't know if the math's right or not.
Okay, the, the math may be right, my problem with that approach, I mean, technically it's correct. But, so if you have one five acre lot, you may be using less water, but you're fewer households, you're one household, you're not five households.
Well, and hi- his argument was, is we're based on conservation, not on how many people we're serving.
Well, I know, and I believe the conservation is based on the conservation per person or per household.
Yeah.
Not, not the land, right? So I mean, so to penalize a smaller lot, or a, a, a bigger lot becoming two smaller lots or five smaller lots, I think is the wrong, the wrong way to view it. I think you view it based on, well, what's the, just, how much water do people need to use, and the smaller lot, in total, they're gonna use probably more water, because there's more bodies consuming water on that lot, but per person, they're gonna use less.
Yeah, and I, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing, I'm just saying. He, he, his, the philosophy there was, is this is a conservation, not about providing services to people, and I, I'm a little bit on both sides of it. Because I was the one.
Well, once again, re- review in six months, I do believe that all of the other cities are placing a limit, as was prescribed in, by the district, remember the district had a variable quantity of grass?
I, I suggest we at least do the two thousand one, what Washington did.
Washington hasn't even done.
Or not Washington, who just, you just say, did one.
I was just told today that, by Mayor Staley, I believe that they're, that they are landing on the two thousand, that doesn't mean that we, that we need to do that. I mean, two thousand square feet is not a lot of area. Back to your point about a large lot, or the question that was brought up about a large lot, is that regardless of how many square feet of grass you've got, you still have the rest of the five acres that you're dealing with. Not all of those are just gonna be native vegetation, right? There's gonna be some kind of landscaping of some kind.
Yeah.
Whether it's grass or not, so. Back to your point, if we're, if we're dealing with, with individuals rather than lot size, there's gonna be more water used on a large lot overall, regardless of the, the amount of grass that's permitted. It's, seems to me.
And I don't think any of us know the right number.
Right.
So fifteen hundred, two thousand, you know, two, I'm fine, two thousand.
He suggested thirty-five hundred, which I think's a little high.
That's a little high.
Yeah, personally, but.
Are we good with two thousand?
This is really for larger lots anyway, right? I mean, the.
Yeah.
So.
If you had a five acre lot, which we don't have very many of them, this two thousand square feet, that's what's that?
Is that what the council wants?
That's two thousand.
I think that's a reasonable number.
Yeah, I think so too.
Okay.
Okay. Then, line two forty-three. So. Yeah, okay, so I added, added this one. So this all came when I started to do the multi-family stuff, but this is still dealing with single family. So grass is not permitted in common areas of development unless it's an active recreation area. The square footage of grass in a common area, active recreation area, will be deducted proportionally from the grass permitted on individual lots. So we get back into the, that same problem. So we crossed out that, that paragraph about pools in common areas. Given that, it's logical to cross this one out, at least for now, we can look at it in six months.
Yeah.
Good?
Are you gonna take the, I think the first, grass is not permitted in common areas of a development unless it's an active recreation area.
You like that?
I like that statement.
Yeah, yeah, because, right, it doesn't need to be decorative grass or whatever, yeah, no, I do, that's true.
All right, then, Carrie, excuse me, Carrie, for the record, I've had a hard time getting Jenny back on line, so she's been, she's been not participating here for a few minutes. Okay, then, line two seventy-two.
Uh, before you do that, I want to jump back to line two forty-five.
Two forty?
We were talking about this last time, that, that we don't, we currently don't allow grass in park strips, and we call them landscape buffers? Remember that conversation? No, not medians. It's talking about park strips, and we, we actually kind of don't have those. Maybe we do some places.
What do you, what do you consider in a park strip?
Well. A landscape buffer is what we have mostly throughout the city, where there's a, a trail or a sidewalk, and then some landscaping up to a block wall that, that closes the project, right?
I see.
And we're basically saying no grass in any of that, so do we want to alter this language to in addition, grass is prohibited in park strips and landscape buffers maybe would be the way to fix that?
Do you also want to just say, and all landscape areas less than, so park strips, landscape buffers, and all landscape areas, less than ten feet?
Eight feet.
Or less than eight feet?
I, I don't know why we need that. I mean, a, a landscape area less, less than eight feet, I, I could show you in yards, decorative, small grass areas that are smaller than eight feet, I'm not sure why we need the eight feet at all.
So in addition, grass is prohibited in park strips, land, and landscape buffers?
And slopes that exceed ten percent. To me, to me, that covers what we have going on here.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't, I'm, when I read the eight feet, I'm not sure that I have seen or can picture seeing in the way our ordinances are written, yeah, that happening here.
I think that wording you set up above is kind of defines where we want grass, is where, I wish I could remember the exact words.
Activity areas.
Activity areas, yeah, for creative.
Recreation, active recreation.
Active rec, active recreation.
But this is a little bit of a different animal, because we're talking about projects that are required to provide either a trail or a sidewalk.
Yeah.
And very often, some additional landscape area, and we're basically just trying to say, okay, outside your project, against the street, we don't want any grass there too, and I think you call that either a park strip or the landscape buffer.
Yeah.
Okay, that solved that?
Yep. Then, two seventy-two, so again, this added the common area exclusion, this is for the decorative water features. So they shall not be located as entry features to the development or in common areas.
I'm sorry, where's that?
Uh, two, uh, line two sixty-eight to two seventy-two.
Thank you.
It's on line two seventy.
Okay.
And this is in the multi-family?
Yeah.
Any concerns? I don't have any.
It's okay, then, line two seventy-nine. I added the indoor pools again, so that's okay.
More likely in this environment.
Yeah, um, line three hundred. So this goes back to the grass in common areas unless it's an active recreation area, so I'll leave that first sentence in, and, and, in paragraph B, I'll take out the rest.
On, on line, on two eighty-one, did we? Because these are only twin or a single family.
No, we're in multi-family now.
Now we're in multi, no wonder.
Yeah, chapter four, yeah.
Yeah, this is a touchy one, isn't it Lance?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think, because that could become a, it becomes almost a nightmare trying to keep track of that stuff.
Two eighty-one?
Yeah. Individual unit.
We'll get some backlash on that, this, but it's really the best way to know where the use is occurring. I've never developed multi-family, you have, what, the, aren't they typically?
In, in, well.
All done on one larger meter?
In, in Seattle, basically, the older properties that aren't individually metered, they've gone to a, a rub system, residential utility billing system that estimates it, and it's not accurate for each unit exactly, but estimated, and then the newer properties have been individually metered, so you can truly pass on that water cost, but that's not the case always, because it is more expensive.
Refresh my memory, does the district version of this require that?
I, I think it did.
I, I do believe so, yeah.
I just can't remember.
So a townhome, for instance, the townhomes over here, they all have individual meters, right? So really, it's a condos, probably the only one.
The, the problem's gonna be with apartment, but so.
Apartments and condos is.
Condos and, well, condos and townhomes, if, if it's, you know, individually owned units, chances are they're gonna be separately metered, but apartments may not be because of the cost, right?
Fill us in on where we are right now, would you Fred, with that?
So yeah, every townhome right now that we have is individually metered, so.
That's a requirement when they.
It is a requirement, and.
So what about apartments?
Apartments, um. Probably not, but maybe Chuck?
See, I would think apartments or condos.
Apartments we've built in the last little while have been the Rocky, University, Rocky Point, what's it called, Rocky Vista.
Rocky Vista.
Rocky Vista University, they are not individually. Yeah, they, they have a larger meter, right? Yep. And I don't, I'm not sure as a practical matter, you're, you're going to see that, so we, we might have to limit that to, um, to townhomes, but not necessarily apartments? I know, City of St. George has said, if, if they own the ground, or if they're on the ground, we want a meter. If they're up in the air, or potentially up in the air on top of other units, then we're, we're okay. Which is so often the case with apartments.
Apartments and condos.
Yeah, that's true too. I mean, you could even put a condo on, I know in Bountiful, where I grew up, there were condos that probably were more appropriately called townhomes, and maybe you need a definition of what a condo is to.
Well, condo means you don't own any ground.
Well, I've seen condos that sometimes own ground, I get, well, or at least, look like they might own ground, I guess.
The real estate guy might have called it a condo, but, right, because if you own ground, it's a townhome, that's how I understand it.
It's in the air.
Oh.
Yeah, because a condo owns air.
Dell?
Condos own the air rights above the ground.
Own the air rights above on a condo, yeah.
So, the, the ground, all the ground, including the ground on which the building is built, is owned by?
The con, the.
In a condo.
Association.
Association, yeah.
Association typically.
Okay.
But it has no value because.
Exactly.
Right.
They've sold all the air rights, so you can't build anything on the ground, because you've sold the air rights. But what you own, when you own a condo unit, is you own the, the wood.
Yeah.
And some air, that's twenty feet off the ground.
And, and some of the wood you don't even maintain, because it's, it's.
It's the association.
Yeah, so if we just said in E, all townhome units, just identify townhome units.
Because in a townhome, you're, you're, you own the footprint.
Yes.
And you don't own, you own only the footprint that your house is on, and that's it, you don't own anything around, but a condo, you're right, it's just air.
So if, if we said all townhome units, and then also just add in there, you know, and, uh, to make it clear that it does exclude apartments and condominiums.
I, I think what you have here, and just right there on the last one, individually plotted condominiums, units, or apartments are accepted. You know, or exempt or whatever.
Now, I don't, why are we taking out condominiums?
Condominiums are not, they're, they're the ones that we're just talking about, they own the air.
Yeah, but, but they're, but, but they're individually owned.
They're individually owned, but they don't have a meter.
That's the big difference, apart, apartments are commonly owned.
Yeah.
So there, so there is, there is both a recovery, if it's a single meter, there's a recovery because it's a single owner.
Yes.
I'm, I'm not sure that, I, I wouldn't exclude condominiums.
I don't think, to build one physically, you're gonna run a line up through everyone's houses, three different lines, to get to the top floor?
I mean, even, even the Black Desert Resort Hotel has got condominiums in there. We've kind of already, of course, they probably, maybe they wouldn't be, maybe they wouldn't have to abide by this, but we've already told them that.
It's one meter.
We encourage sub-metering, but we're allowing them to master meter the whole hotel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is, is there a distinction in the way you treat a condominium versus a townhome?
So I, the way we've been doing it right now is, like you said, if it's owned, like Centiaire, for example, the clusters are all individually owned, they all have their own meters.
But they touch the ground.
They touch the ground, but there, there are some units that are gonna go up too, and, um, so if it's owned by one owner, single meter, if it's owned by everybody that buys into it, uh, every owner has its own meter, if it makes any sense.
And I, and I would do that, whether it's condominiums or townhomes myself.
I'm just thinking of the ability and funk, you know, to create, if I'm gonna put a meter from the ground to run my lines up there three stories, you got three different lines.
They do it with the wires out of the electric meters, they're all down on ground.
But I'm saying it costs, it, it's more risk, because you've got three lines running through there, it's just a functionality thing, in my opinion, but I, I don't think, most condos are done with, because HOA owns, usually pays the water bill. So, in condos.
You pay it through your fees.
Yeah, you pay it through your, your fees.
Sometimes you pay electric through the fee.
Yeah, even electric's sometimes done through the fees.
The, the point that governs to me is the fact that it's individual ownership, individual ownership, individual meter.
Yeah.
That's not true in an apartment.
Yeah, and. Yeah, I, I would, um, just the philosophy of what I know about condos, I, I, you know.
Of course, our real estate expert, when we need her.
But we can, let's just put it in there, and then when we have a public hearing, maybe something will come out of it.
Yeah, that's true, we're not adopting it tonight.
Yeah.
So, what are we gonna say, just in this last sentence, individually-platted condominium units and apartments are accepted if a property owners' association, oh no, cause it wouldn't be a property owners' association for apartments, but, um.
I, I would simply have townhomes and condominiums because of, because of the fact that they're individually owned. That they require, they require individual meters. And apartments are not individually owned, they're, they're rented under a common ownership, that's a different animal.
Okay, but then still put in this last sentence where individually-platted condos are accepted if the association owns and maintains the water lines and meters?
I mean, that's kind of what.
Or are we encouraging them to not do that?
I mean, you're, we're trying to keep costs down, we're trying to say, that's the purpose of a condo is to give you ability to go. It's not nice as a townhome, but it allows a little more portability, cause you don't own the property.
Where's Dale? By the way, where's Dale? Forgot to excuse Dale, who is recovering from surgery, but understand he's gonna participate online? He actually gonna be here? We'll save this question for when Dale comes.
Well, just, just put in there what you want, and we'll just.
Well, I, I, I think that probably that last, that last sentence is a different kind of qualifier, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
What do you think?
Yeah, I mean.
I think, I think it is, because, because you, if the, if the association is gonna maintain the water lines and the meters, then yeah, I don't think we need to have separate.
Yeah.
I think it just depends.
You're putting an undue burden on my, on the association from my perspective. Now, we can, we can ask people who build them how they normally do it, because we don't really have a lot of condos in.
Well, the whole point of the, the whole point of the ordinance, hello, the whole point of the ordinance is to encourage
I know.
individual property owners or others to conserve.
I agree.
The farther you get away from individuals, the less incentive there is to, to conserve. I mean, we're, we were talking today at, at the League of Cities and Towns meetings, in a, in a caucus meeting. Other cities have, and this suggestion has been made to us already previously, that on our water bills, like the electric bills, that we show how an individual household is doing compared to others in the neighborhood, right? You get that little comparative thing, hey, you know, you're ten percent above those around you. And we had, how many, three of the cities that were already doing that? And they said it made a big difference in, in their, their consumptive use. So if somebody else is paying the bill, it's the association, there's no individual responsibility for conservation.
Well, they, when you have an HOA meeting, it.
Well, I'm, I'm saying it doesn't.
Yeah.
The, the HOA can get upset and go at individuals, but it's not, it's just not the same.
So, all's we gotta do is find out how people build condos now, and if it's feasible, that's all I'm saying. Cause it might not even be feasible to do that.
That's fair.
And we don't, I don't know that answer tonight. I've always been told, I've had some relatives that's had condos and their water bills always in the HOA fee, they don't have an individual water bill, so.
So for the purpose of tonight, and trying to move forward.
Yeah.
If we just take out that last sentence completely, and then start the paragraph with all townhomes shall be separately metered, and then let's see what we can find out about condos.
Well, and I like the word all.
I, I would phrase it differently than that. I would phrase it, all townhomes and condominiums shall be separately metered, and Dale answered that question, because I think that's where it needs to end up. And then.
And then take out that last sentence.
Then apartments are.
Exactly.
Apartment dwellings are exempted, or whatever.
Mm-huh. I think we just gotta find someone that's dealt with townhomes, so we'll know.
I, I agree with you, but, but I, I believe that there are a lot of different kinds of condominiums. So they're the type you're thinking of when that word is said, and they're the type I'm thinking of, that I'm familiar with from family members living in a condominium environment.
Yeah.
And, I don't know if.
Mine are all, the ones I know are from Salt Lake. I've had relatives and they all, I actually quizzed them a little bit, and they says, some of them, their power bill and water bill was included in some of the older ones.
Yes.
But now.
But we're talking about new construction.
Yes.
The object is, how do we encourage conservation in this, in this multi-family environment, right?
Mm-huh.
Are you okay with leaving it like that until we get some more information?
So, remember, we got, I think, affordability too, cause that's, we're fighting two different battles here.
Oh, I know.
Okay.
Okay, then, line two ninety-six to three hundred, so this gets back to, again, you know, thinking of, um, the common area. So grass is not permitted in a common area of a development unless it is an active recreation area. And then I had that same kind of square footage deduction that we took out elsewhere for the single-family and twin home. Take that out here as well. At this point. Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay, then, getting close, line four oh five.
Hey, Mike, as we go, we're all assuming that as you have digested all this information, the district's version of this, Santa Clara's version of this, the comments from St. George, that in the language that you have included in your draft, that, that you have thoughtfully concluded that this is the, the reasonable version, right?
Well, for these nine items, I wasn't sure if it was reasonable, that's why I'm, I want this test here.
But the other items, you believe, is, you interpreted what we said, cause what I'm reading, it seems like you did pretty good job on that.
Yeah.
Continue.
So, okay, line four oh five. So. Landscaping shall be maintained in, oh yes, so the, um, this was in definitions, but nothing in, there was nothing in the ordinance about maintenance at, at all. We talked about that, you know, how's landscaping going to be maintained after the fact, after the development's done, will it be effective? The interesting thing is in the conservancy district's draft ordinance, in their definitions, they basically had what I've now put in the ordinance. So, if Dale were here, I think he'd agree with me, I'm pretending to be an attorney tonight. So the, the, the conservancy district put this language in the definitions, but then never used any of these words in the ordinance. Therefore, it means nothing, it's just a definition, it's not a regulation, right? So I just moved it into the ordinance, basically saying landscaping shall be maintained, so this goes after the installation in a live and thriving condition, this is the, the conservancy district's language, and et cetera, so is that?
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah, I don't know, why put it in the definition if it's nowhere in the?
Yeah, those words didn't exist anywhere, and then, I'm, I'm sorry, I did do an addition on, back on line sixty-eight that I didn't tell you about.
As in sixty-eight?
Yeah.
Second page?
I think so, line sixty-eight. Oh yes, this, this came up when, um, I think when Centier was reviewing the resorts language. And they, they pointed out, hold on, let me find this. Okay, so basically, um, the language the conservancy district had, and, and Santa Clara had as, as well, is that restrictive covenants in conflict with the water efficiency standards. Any provision in homeowners or property owners' association governing documents, such as bylaws, operating rules, covenants, conditions, and restrictions that govern the operation, and so on, are, are void and unenforceable if they conflict with what's here. So, we've seen that a bunch of times before, and, uh, Centier said their, their attorney just recommended adding in also in the declarations. So the governing documents such as bylaws, declarations, operating rules.
Oh, does that, yeah, that totally makes sense, actually.
So I didn't put that in here because Centier was reviewing the resorts language after I'd already sent this out.
Mayor?
Please.
Um, we, I was just noticing, well, actually, Commissioner Anderson was noticing that on line three oh three, you're gonna wanna make that the same as, this is, this says, grass is prohibited in park strips and landscape areas.
I'm glad you said that, I noticed that too.
So we wanna, you wanna fix that to be whatever we, we said on the other, the landscape buffer thing.
And park strips and landscape buffers.
Yeah.
Park strips, comma, landscape buffers, and any slope that exceeds ten percent.
Well, I'm sorry, I don't have anything else to talk about on this one.
So, we're, we're to the last couple of pages here. And council, are, are we okay with the, the red lines in here? These are all previously discussed and agreed upon, right?
I've got something I wanted to ask.
Yes.
So, this thing about trees will be planted in a manner that protects view corridors and view sheds.
Okay.
And then you sent a picture of a shed, which was funny, by the way, but I'm having a little problem with this conceptually on individual lots, because nobody owns a view. And so you can't say on an individual lot, my neighbor can't put a tree, cause it's blocking my view. I understand it along our arteries and places where we have view corridors, but not, do, does that, okay.
Mayor?
Sorry.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor. So there's, for one thing, this would be very, very difficult to enforce, you don't, I mean, if, if there is a small piece of vegetation in the corner, we don't know what it is, who knows, that, that could be a tree that's gonna grow up and. So it strikes me, after we had this conversation, I think you asked the question. HOAs tend to put in rules. I know that the HOAs that we have created all had regulations as to where you could put trees. It strikes me that maybe this is better dealt with and enforced there than it is in, on individual lots.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I agree, it's gonna be hard to do, and I think it's the same philosophy we had when we were trying to protect people's view by where they can build a house and all these things. I don't think it's something we can have these guys, I think it's a statement, because every, and this is, I wanna make sure we understand this, every HOA property has three to four sides that doesn't have that ruling on it. So, every outside property of the HOA relies on the city to help them protect their rights. So whenever we say HOAs, it's better to take care of it, that guy on the outside still has the city to be, help them.
Yeah, that's true.
And so, and that statement kinda, you know, you just gotta be thinking about it, unless it's a big enough HOA, you know.
Please.
So, so a little background, this, this came up as a, as a public comment, that was an email, which was just terrific. And, you know, she was asking, well, what's a view shed, what's a view corridor? So I, I spent a little time trying to research that, and there is technical definitions of a view shed, there isn't one for view corridor. But the technical definition of a view shed, so far as I've been able to ascertain it, is a, a view shed is determined from a specific point to the view. So Red Mountain would be something you'd wanna protect.
Yeah.
But the view shed has to be determined from a specific point. This is, it's not, it's, it's technical, so you'd have a landscape architect to go out and analyze what would, what would your view shed be? And so that doesn't work, right? So, so another thing, and again, this isn't something that we would, you can't regulate this statement, I'm gonna say, it's just a suggestion. And, and I've talked about other things in this ordinance that were suggestions, and I said, well, if they're just suggestions, take them out, because what can you do? But, but I think we need to take out any reference to view shed and view corridor, because they're, they're not really definable terms for us. And, but we could say, if you wanna make a statement about this, you could say care shall be taken to control the location, size, and massing of trees to minimize the obstruction of all views. It's, but that's not, there's no teeth in that, it's just a suggestion.
It's, we do have a view shed or view corridor ordinance on the arterias.
Yeah, we have, we have identified where the views are.
Major collectors, it's six feet and fifteen degree angle.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Fifteen degree, yeah.
Yeah, cause, because I could see this creating.
But here, we're talking about farms and.
Well, we didn't get to plant the trees because of that, along Snow Canyon Parkway. So we set precedence on our decision.
So we, we've been very conscientious to try and, and remain practical, or have we crossed into the impractical arena here?
Yeah. And I'm not saying we need to put it in there.
As far, maybe as far as an ordinance, we can enforce that, but correct me if I'm wrong, um, this is not something that the code can actually enforce, as far as height and corridor, stuff like that. My only suggestion may be that we could, we could catch it, we could do a plan review on, you know, a landscape architect, and have the type of trees, the, you know, how tall it grows, how wide it becomes, but, I mean, as far as enforcing this, I think it's a losing battle from the start.
Cause in ten years.
There's no way to predict what it is, it's, so. And from my understanding, as long as it's not obstructing, uh, the view for a road access or anything, we basically have no say in it, so.
Unless we put it in here, but we don't want it, cause it's impractical.
That would just eliminate it altogether, then.
Yeah, I mean, that, I, I get, all you could do is just put in a touchy-feely comment, and what's the point of that, so.
And they can be in our guidelines if we need it.
I've got one more comment, if, if it's, I don't know where this is going, is this going in the land use ordinance, in the zoning ordinance? Cause if it goes in the water services or part of our code, I don't, I mean, it's a water conservation ordinance, not a view ordinance. Probably ought to be addressed in the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, that's true, actually, you're right. The point being, that isn't even what this is about.
Right.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think you're right, just take it out.
So really, anything that has to do with maintenance, trees, and anything, really don't relate to here, besides that we're trying, you know.
Except that the maintenance is, is a long-term issue in terms of, um, preserve, you know, they're, they're suggesting that there need to be landscaped areas, and if they all die off, we have something entirely different.
Yeah.
Did you have something?
No, that's it.
Okay, thanks.
I just, so you're gonna take it out, then?
Yeah, took it out, and so, we're done with that document, so now we've got the four-page resorts chapter. It's not redlined, because you've, you never, we didn't, we didn't have that at the last meeting. So this basically just takes material out of the other chapter, as, you know, that we've already talked about, balances it a bit. But this also has a, it starts off on line six, with specific provisions of this chapter can be waived by the city, if a hydrologist, water use engineer, landscape ar, or landscape architect that is licensed in the state of Utah, or similarly qualified expert, approved by the city, provides a statement and supporting documentation showing that the design meets or exceeds all the water conservation measures and goals in this ordinance. So, this ordinance has pretty much all the same construction and landscape standards that we have in the others, tweaked a little bit to fit with a resort, because it's a, it's, it's much more of fluid development. You're gonna have commercial buildings, residential buildings, but where are the amenities going to be? Where's the grass and the water feature and the pools? But also, because it is so fluid, it's, it's harder to define some of these standards. So if there is supporting documentation from a professional that says it's meeting or exceeding our water conservation goals, you've got that additional flexibility.
Yeah, I mean, that's, essentially, that's like asking a structural engineer to certify that a, a structure is, is in compliance with, with code, which you guys, on more sophisticated types of designs, wouldn't know, right, without a structural engineer certification, same sort of thing.
Yeah, and, and, and we had, we'd seen that language, I had that language before, but again, I changed it. I was also told, and again, this was by Centier, is, you know, hydro, I think we had hydrologists, but not water use engineer. And he said, you know, hydrologists don't necessarily work on this kind of project.
That's true.
Yeah, so, but it could be a hydrologist or a water use engineer, so that was really the addition. So, if you, if you, I got any particular items here you want to address, let me know.
Well, I, I saw the comments from both Patrick Manning and Stan, you know, the concerns that they had, I thought they were all addressed in here. And they will certainly, they'll have the opportunity to comment in a public hearing anyway, if there's
Right.
anything that is a concern. So council members, do you have any other issues with that section, that new section? I didn't have any red lines in there at all, myself.
Yeah, I don't have anything with it, I think it's, I think it's very well-written. As usual for Mike.
So they might be someone that's good to talk, because we're going back into it down here. So, they might be someone that's good to talk, because we're going back into it down here, and they might be someone that's good to talk to about how their condos and stuff.
The nice thing is that, at least in the case of Centier, they do have a water use specialist slash hydrologist who is working with them on the project and who has agreed to review this. So, we're going to get some expert commentary on this, if not by the time it's adopted after the public hearing, certainly within the six-month period. So, I think the consensus is that we've, you've come really, really close here. And if that's the case, I think we're ready to just move this to a public hearing.
If you want it to read how the other one read, you want to change that F.
Which line, sorry?
Change what?
Line, it says individually plotted condominiums.
I'm sorry, this doesn't have lines. Which page?
Oh, first page. F, six-one F. Oh, you're in it. Right down here.
Oh, I see, okay.
That's that same, you need to change it to what our other one changed to.
Oh, okay.
And then somewhere in here, there's also the, the park strip thing, and so, we need to find that. And I saw, you know, the park strip, the landscape buffer, I think that was in here, too. The thing that we changed. I believe I saw it in here.
Let's find that, too.
Okay, and, yeah, I'll look for those or anything else that we changed in the main document, see if it's duplicated here in the resort section and make the same change.
So, are we in agreement, then, that as I meant, oh, Dale, hi.
Hello.
Good to see you. Good to see you walking.
Yes, feels good to be walking.
Congratulations. So, Dale, we just barely got to the end of this. You must have been tuned in. You made an entrance right on cue here. We're ready to move this on to a public hearing, as it's been amended tonight. Can we just assume that those amendments will be?
Well, that's a question that I have, is where is this going in the code? We have water restrictions, for example, that are not part of the zoning ordinance. They're in a separate part of the code. A lot of these provisions could be zoning-type issues. I'm not sure where Santa Clara-
It strikes me, it belongs in the, in the building code.
Yes, that's, that's where I'm thinking as well. And so, a public hearing is not required, although I think in this case, it may be advisable.
Council, would it be your anticipation that we would hold a public hearing on this? I think it's a, I would like that.
I would like to.
We should, yeah.
So, because if it was going into the zoning ordinance, then you would have to send it back to Planning Commission. Because it didn't originate there, it originated here. And, and so, if it's going to be part of the building codes, then a public hearing is optional, and we could set it for a public hearing next meeting, if that's, if that's your desire.
Council?
I'd like to have a code-
I think we should.
Yeah, and I can get all these changes done in the next day or two. So, council, you're, you're fine with these corrections that have been noted tonight, being, being corrected on, on a final version that would, that would be presented at the public hearing, right?
Yeah. The only thing on line one-eleven, which is under six-point-five, under E, says, "Trees shall be irrigated on a separate hydrozone as needed for..." We changed that, because you can do that by, with the type of bubbler you put on them. You don't need a separate line to them.
One-eleven, these are just for, this is for resorts?
Yeah. But you, to me, even in a resort, you don't need it. I've never known anybody yet that I've been around runs-
So far, they, they didn't object to that.
Yeah. I would, if I had to build a resort. Because it's, you can manage it by the bubblers you put on it. I'd say, or an alternative conservation method.
Well, they have that automatically, right, and that, at the very beginning, starting on, on line six. You know, they- Oh. Yeah, you've given them basically an out with an alternative provision. I think that's common practice in the landscaping world to do that, but Lance, you're saying it's certainly not universally done, because you don't.
Well, people have been around, most landscapers, they control it with the bubblers. Like, you know, a tree, you put two-one gallon per minute or whatever, you know.
So, the tree, the trees, yeah, the trees would be on the same bubbler system as bushes and other-
If they just have more going to them, because they need more. And the littler bushes have a less gallons per minute on it, so.
So, either take this out completely, or leave it in with the provision that the suitable alternatives accept.
They have, they have the alternative anyway.
Okay. Just so everybody, they don't, they don't have to, alternatives sometimes become.
We good to move on?
Yep.
Yeah. Wow, we're done with that.
Chris, you've just witnessed a miracle.
Yeah, we're done with that.
All right. Let's see, item five B, "We'll continue discussion on the Planning Commission's recommendation regarding light reflective value in Chapter nineteen of the Ivans City Code."
Mayor?
Yes.
I don't know the proper way to suggest this, but since Cade's here, do you want to have his report first, or?
You know what? You're welcome to, to make a motion to suspend the rules and move to item-
I would move to suspend the rules and have Cade make his presentation, because after, after the exciting legal document we went through, I'd love nothing but a forty-page budget document to look at.
So, he, he's got items-
So, that's why I move.
It's only twenty-nine.
I'll second that. I'll second it.
Would that be for items D, E, and F?
For, for all of K's. All right, call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're on. I don't know if it came to you, but myself and the council received an email asking, what the heck is a tentative budget for a tentative? Did you see that one? So, begin by explaining that, for the record, we do. Dale, they've added another longer extension yet again.
Yes, that's the one that was ordered. That's a twenty-four inch.
Oh.
So, people have no excuse not to be close to the microphone. So, Cade, step right up there.
Hey, Mayor, Jenny had sent out a text. Did you see that?
Sorry?
She just says, "I keep losing you. Please, if any decision about water color issues are looking to be close votes, please table them until I can be there next time."
So-
I can't get reception.
I'll respond to her and just tell her that we've moved it to a public hearing, so she'll be able to have any final comments that she wishes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Oh, my gosh, yes, I've got several.
So, to begin, the tentative budget for the emails that went out is something that's not finalized. It's still a work in progress. So, tentatively, we will be discussing the budget, and hopefully, over the course of the next few weeks, we'll approve the tentative budget, make it a final adoption and a final budget. But before we get there, I'll start with item D, the monthly report. Nothing too noteworthy in March. Things are humming along. All the departments are under their budgets for the expenditures. Some are close, and so, as the city historically has done, we will amend financially your twenty-two budget in the coming weeks as well, just to ensure we're state-compliant, not leaving it up to chance that, for some odd reason or another, a surprise, you know, transmission goes out or whatnot, and we're not, no longer compliant. So, I'll be looking at that. As more data comes in, we can, I can forecast that as, as best I can to make sure that the amendment matches with what we're, we're forecasting. We submitted our report for the ARPA funds, so the American Rescue Plan Act. We haven't spent anything, so the report was really simple, but we are federally compliant as well. We've reported that, and we're, we're good with that report. So, that wraps up the March monthly budget finance report. Any questions with that document, or?
Council? Thank you.
Yep. Okay, moving on to the next item. Sorry, unless you're supposed to do that, Mayor. I just figure, I'll just keep rolling.
You know, to the next item.
Quarter three. Start off with some economic overview of the county. There's a little bit of a lag of the data we get from Department of Workforce Services and the county itself. So, some of these, I mean, this one's showing the unemployment rate as of December for the county. That's as far along as we've been, and it continues to drop, so one-point-eight percent, as we can see over the last year, it's continuing to go down. We'll see where that goes in the coming months, but that trend over a year is just, I would be surprised if it goes any lower than that. Average monthly wage continues to go up, which is no surprise with inflation, as employers are trying to help their employees out with the outrageous inflation that continues to go on. Annual change in gross taxable sales. So, you know, as you see there, for the last little, you know, two years, we had seen that, as consumers, our spending has gone up. And then there was finally a dip in this last quarter. Still, twenty percent increase year over year in terms of consumer spending. So, we might see a trend going forward of, you know, as inflation goes, and uncertainty in the economy continues to go on, that that number still might go back down or closer to zero, or trend back to the ten percent, five percent range, rather than the crazy thirty-eight percent we had in quarter two of twenty-one. And then the building permits, we had a spike again in February, and then March, we saw some more come in. So, we're continuing to grow, and that's not slowing down this year.
Does the building permits kind of follow the same trend year to year? February kind of go up? Seems like people kind of slow down for the holidays, and then they want to get stuff going in February. Is that a trend, or is that just the way that is this year?
I'm not sure. Fred, is that what you've seen?
Okay.
So. Now, we're moving into the fund bar graphs. I'm trying to figure out a way to make these move, and then, at the very end, the numbers just pop. And so, it's kind of like, you don't know what you're going to see.
You don't need to entertain.
Still working on that, but, so, general fund tax revenues, our revenues are coming in great. We want to see the orange bar higher than the blue bar in all these instances. Blue is budget, orange is actually, or through March. So, we've, we've hit all of our revenues, and we continue to pace to end the year well. Other revenues, the license and permits jumped significantly. Black Desert put in for their first building permit, and that was just over a quarter of a million dollars. So, that's why we see a significant jump from what was budgeted year-to-date to what is actually year-to-date.
Oh.
And same for intergovernmental revenues and charges for services. So, here, going into the expenditures, here, we want to see, again, the blue bar higher than the orange. And the departments are all doing well of maintaining their budgets so far year-to-date. So, no real issues there. Capital projects, this is a good, it's good news. We're coming in under budget on the, this building, as the final invoices pile in for a touch-up here or repair there, or equipment that we needed. So, we're coming in under budget. I don't think we'll even get close to that one-point-six million. And then, as well, the police remodel is looking like it'll finish up as well, now that we're taking away some expensive change orders. So, good news there, that these buildings came in under budget. Hughes did a great job of, of keeping us on track and, and saving the city money. All the other capital projects are going to be, all that we see up there are going to be pushed into next fiscal year. So, road projects, Highway ninety-one, next year, parking trail.
So, is this revised based on, I mean, are there new estimates on this? My big concern-
It'll be coming in the fiscal year twenty-three budget report, but, so you're talking about like the one-point-four million for like the street projects?
Yes, I don't remember what it was before, but the big concern here is that, is that inflation has changed that budget's going to be in.
So, for the first phase, Chuck, in his conversations, it looks like it's going to be about two-point-eight million, so double what we see there for Highway ninety-
So, other sources are going to cover half that cost regardless of how high that goes?
We'll see how, just how it goes. So, right now, based on what we're going to budget for next year, we'll, we'll have enough impact fees and capital project fund reserve to pay for that two-point-eight million. Now, for the next phase, phase two, which Chuck would be able to help us with the timing on that, we would probably need to bond for that. And then, including that bond, maybe other street projects or road maintenance, rather than just bonding for one specific thing, maybe bonding for multiple projects at a time.
I'm sorry, this is phase one?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is the completed section?
So, the blue bar is the budget.
For, for which project?
Oh, so, Highway ninety-one, road project.
So, this, this is phase two. We simply don't have any expenditures against it, but what I was asking is, has this been adjusted for inflation, what we're seeing?
Not this number that you're seeing right here.
Okay.
But the one we'll see in the next slides with the fiscal year twenty-three budget will be updated.
Okay, sorry.
These were just the, yeah, the budget numbers, but no expenditures have occurred. They've all just been pushed to the next one. Sorry for the confusion. Moving into the enterprise funds. Again, Chuck runs a, a good crew. Revenues are outpacing budgets, expenditures are under budget. And then, the irrigation project, again, is getting pushed into next year, the first phase of that, so that's why the budget bar is so high, and the expenditures don't quite match up with it. And we'll see the same story with the sewer fund and the storm drain fund. And we're on track in all those enterprise funds to, to exceed our budget and come in under, under budget on the expenditures.
Can I ask a dumb question?
Yeah.
What's your non-operating expenses and income? What does that mean?
So, non-operating expenses are going to be capital projects. So, the biggest portion of storm drain funds and sewer funds is the portion that enterprise funds are paying for, like the city hall, other equipment that Chuck and his crew would need, things that aren't materials, things that aren't road maintenance, everyday things. I can get you a specific list of all those. It's also on the, the budget document, but it's any sort of larger capital expenditure, equipment, projects.
Like, would the sweeper be part of that?
Part of it, yeah. Mm-hmm, yep, it's allocated.
Doesn't relate to a particular project, but we need it to keep the whole city operating?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions so far? Sorry, I've been going fast. Impact funds or impact fees, it's historically, the city's always budgeted a hundred or so building permits, and that's what impact fees are based on. Based on the growth we've had this year, we're just outpacing all of it, based on the growth that we're having. And then, to wrap up with the third-quarter presentation, inflation continues to increase and continues to affect every department in every different way you can think of. Expenditures are still on track. We'll see, again, like I said, where we're, we're coming at year-end, and we'll adjust it as needed. Capital projects are on track, under budget, and hopefully, in the second week or third week of May, the police will be moving, hopefully, into the new building, so that's coming up soon. And then, the only thing to, you know, keep in the back of our, for the completion of Highway ninety-one project, we'll, we'll need a bond for that realistically, and-
Bond rates are probably up just like interest rates, right?
Yeah. So, there's definitely, the sooner the better. If we can come to a conclusion on price and how much we need, then, yeah, sooner the better. And we've had early talks with Zions about what we would be able to afford.
Chuck? Sorry, where, where do we stand on getting that out for, for bid? Is the design even done?
The design is sort of done. We have to make some changes. We worked through some of these right-of-way issues, because some of the people are trying to acquire right-of-way through, through, they're acquiring us to make some minor tweaks. But for all intents and purposes, it's a done design. So, it's just getting the right-of-way. We can't bid it out till we get the right-of-way. That's just part of UDOT's rules.
Mayor?
Yes.
So, they keep referring to phase one and phase two of Highway project ninety-one. What does that mean?
Phase one is a part of-
So, the mayor and, and Cade were kind of crossed wires on what's phase one and what's phase two. So, sometimes we call phase one what we did, the joint project with Santa Clara, where some of it was in Santa Clara and some of it was in Ivans.
I thought that was phase one.
Right. But what Cade's talking about is this next phase, we've- But, what Cade's talking about is this next phase, we've broken it up into two phases, which we call now phase one and phase two. So, that's where we're getting our wires crossed a little bit.
Explain what phase one, phase two would be.
Well, phase two was gonna be to try to do the whole thing. And then when we broke it up into two phases, we said we can only go to 600 West and we'll try to do the rest of it at a later date.
So, 600?
So, maybe we should call it phase two and phase three.
So, phase one goes to 600 West?
Phase one goes to 600 West, but it still takes the trail all the way to Ivans reservoir.
That's what I was trying to make sure you understood. Okay. Because that'll help us understand bonding and that need there.
That last section, I don't know, when, if inflation and bonding rates keep going up, when are we ever gonna build that last section?
When they quit using it for a freeway.
Yeah, that's where you're gonna have some tough decisions. You've got the public saying a lot of wants that would be nice to have. That's not our primary function. Our primary function is health, safety, welfare. And Highway 91 is now our responsibility for maintenance. And that next phase from 600 West on to the border, to the west, is going to become a dangerous section of road because it's falling apart. And so, as you consider the priority between some wants that citizens have, and I'm not saying that they're unjustified. I'm just saying that there's not enough money to do everything. You'll have to balance those with the needs of the city and the primary purpose of a city, unless everybody's willing to say, yes, we're willing to have our property taxes increased to pay for these non-essential wants that they're expressing. So, you know, that's what it's coming down to. As you'll recall, when Wally was here, he began discussions that, you know, a property tax might be necessary. And we had those discussions this year. That maybe it would be necessary to, at a minimum, hold the rate. But, with that building permit, that first building permit with Black Desert and things, there's, and by putting some expensive things off, we were able to come in this year in a reasonable place and balance the budget. And so, it's not necessary this year. Inflation is a two-edged sword. It can increase your sales tax because prices are all going up. And so, you're paying more for things and so, there's more sales tax. But, on the other hand, it's driving the costs of everything. Anything that is connected to oil is going through the roof. And so, when we're talking about asphalt projects and things for Highway 91, we're talking about increasing costs in order to get that road into a safe condition. And that's one of our primary concerns, as is public safety. And so, these are the tough decisions that you guys get to make.
So, sorry, Cade, this feels like an interruption of this, but it's really closely connected. It strikes me that as I look at the world's oil market and the potential for this to be disrupted for a very, very long time. You, and you've brought this up before, the idea of us bringing the rest of that, I mean, chip seal, something that's going to restore it sufficiently for it to extend its life for 10 or years or so, and expanding the shoulders for, to take care of the safety issue, Dale?
Yep.
If we're gonna bond, I'm wondering if we wouldn't be prudent to just figure that in. We're not gonna get any help with that because that's just straight maintenance. We're not rebuilding anything from 600 onto the border.
Well, we are widening.
Yeah.
So, they do count that.
Because UDOT usually, because it is still their road underneath, but they usually, I mean, I've done many a projects where they took those slopes from the one and a half to one to a three to one, you know? Two and a half, four to one, you know, so.
I would like to recommend, if the council's in agreement, that we really take a serious look at bringing the rest of that stretch up to a safe condition, both for cyclists and traffic. And if we're going to bond, I mean, if the bond rates are high, we have redone bonds when, you know, if that rate comes down. But, we don't know that it's gonna come down. I mean, the forecasts are that interest is gonna go up and that means bonds are gonna go up too. And it just strikes me that maybe the smart thing to do is to try and get that whole thing safe so that we're not, Dale, looking at another $2 million or whatever it's gonna be in five years on that last section. We don't have, we don't have much in the way of development out there. And Kianna's main entrance is now occurring at 600, right? So.
And that brings up a subject that I've had with, not about Kianna, but if you watch traffic patterns, because I travel 10, 12 times a day.
Yeah.
From 200 West to 600, I'd like to know what that takes to finish the other lane. So, we're done with it because that's probably your busiest area, you know?
So, Lance brings up a whole can of worms.
Yeah.
Because that would require us then to go back into the design and revise the design.
I'm saying.
But, that may be, that may be the soonest next project is actually widening the busy section rather than.
Well, your cost.
What I'm saying is, I think we're gonna be smart to get Highway 91 operable for the foreseeable future. So, we're not looking at another bond because the road is falling apart under whatever conditions are gonna exist in, both with the cost of oil and the cost of bonding. I mean, I don't, I have no idea what we're talking about for cost, but is it possible for you to look at that? And would that be included in the, I guess that'd have to be in the design? Or can we just decide what we're gonna do and do it ourselves?
Yeah, and I'd have to go back and check and see what they'll let us do because we are kind of working under UDOT's.
But, I mean, they're involved with this up to 600.
And the path.
Well, and they can, and, yeah, right. Because that's where we're using the federal funds. Now, we could, we could do that project and then do a separate project that doesn't involve federal funds, which is always just easier.
I mean, I'm actually suggesting that we do just what you were talking about in lieu of doing a chip seal. Is, if our crew is capable of doing that, can we piece together a renovation of sorts of that last section?
I think, I think, it is, Lance is shaking his head because our crew's busy already.
I mean, I'm gonna tell you, sometimes we have a tendency to say, your crew's cheaper, our crew's cheaper. But, our crew doesn't have time to do what they gotta do to take care of the people and.
Regardless, whether we do it or whether we get somebody to do it, but.
But, I wanted just a little bit between 200 and 600, how many square feet, I mean, how much asphalt width are you really adding to that? Because that, it's a cost thing, Mayor, is why I'm saying when I'm, if I'm building a road, I add 20 feet of asphalt.
It's probably like, it's probably like 20 feet of asphalt.
That's nothing while you're there doing the operation.
It would add, I don't know how much it would add.
How many square feet is it, or length is it? And I'll tell you real quick.
So, from 400 to 200 or to 200 East?
200, I'm saying from 200 West to 600.
From 200 West to 600 West.
We only have, we only have two lanes going down into Santa Clara and we're only gonna have two lanes coming on the other side of it.
But, it's the traffic getting back and forth too. That's what I'm saying.
It just creates a passing zone.
Boy, I'd wanna see, I'd wanna see some testing before we jump into that and change the design.
Anyway, that distance would be, so a half mile plus another 30%. So, maybe 30, 300 feet or something like that.
So, I mean, you could look at that, right? I mean, just forecast what that cost would be, but.
Well, yeah, it's pretty easy if you got a square footage, just add that cost.
You're probably talking less than 100, 300 grand probably. And that road's done, you don't have to go back and cut asphalt and, you know, because the minute you do it the other way, you gotta go pay to cut asphalt, remove asphalt.
It's a little tricky because we've gotta do some redesign, but, but you're probably right. It probably, probably wouldn't add more than a half million dollars.
Cheaper, I think.
So, regardless, the section from 600 to the border, we're going to have to deal with sometime in the near future. Agreed?
Absolutely. I, in my, in my heart of hearts, it's like we get this federal project done and then we have this project on its heels, starting very close to when the other project gets done.
I would just be very curious to find out what it would cost to do a basic repair and widening the shoulders on the rest of that section because I don't see the demand being there for a period of time. And, you know, with these, with these commercial developments coming into play, there are gonna be some revenue sources in the future that we haven't had the luxury of having in the past. But, there, but that's a few years out. And somehow, we need to stretch the useful life of that section. And particularly what you're saying, Dale, the safety of that. I just cringe every time I see a cyclist out there on that, on that section of road.
Yeah. And I, I did price it, if we were, as if our crew were doing it, and I priced it out at about a million dollars. If we had some other crew do it, you could probably, maybe like a million and a half, where we're not doing kind of the full rebuild, we're just doing the widen and then putting a chip seal over the top.
That doesn't sound like that's in budget either.
If you don't widen, it's a lot easier.
Like Cade was saying.
Don't widen, yeah.
And we've only had, how many accidents we had on that road?
Well, there's been one fatality in that section.
Yeah, but, you know, we're how many years?
That was about six or seven years ago.
Yeah.
But, you look at the condition of the cracking.
No, I said, if you don't widen it, it'd be cheap.
Yeah. But, you know, if that alone was, if you, if you said, well, we'd want to bond for something larger, you could put another project with it. Another safety issue is Puerto Drive, for example. Putting a sidewalk down there and traffic calming that we've talked about. We haven't been able to get the grants or the state to fund, fund that. So, you could put a couple of projects together and bond it as a, under a street bond. I'm just saying, there's some options. But, you're gonna, you're gonna hear a lot of wants. But, there are needs out there that need to be accomplished. And, and some of them are parks related. And if we have park impact fees and the land to do it, then, you know, maybe we can consider a project. But, a lot of those park impact fees are gonna be paying for the trail to take it out to the border too.
Didn't we have a grant for that also?
Yeah.
Yeah.
400 West is another road now that the Havens and all those are along there that would be something to.
So, Cade, sorry for the, for the comma here. But, this will ultimately play into what is going to occur in the form of a bond. And sorry to distract that discussion, but is the council in agreement that we ought to take a look at these, this or these additional projects and carry it all on a single? I mean, the ability to repay is significant too. So, you're gonna have to sort that out if there's another million and a half dollars involved in. Because that'd be all on us, right? Or would we have any participation?
We do have this, this grant application that we put in and with some luck, you know, we can, we can get some of that money, but.
For the trail or?
For the whole thing.
So, are you able to use, if you've bonded for a project, can you apply for grants to repay the bond or once it's bonded for, you're done?
Hard to get a grant if you've already paid for something.
Yeah, they grant, if you tell the grant you're gonna use it to pay off the bond, they'll be like, no, you can't have it.
I've never dealt with that, so.
That's a do it first.
Once you, once you, once you've built the project, they're like, oh, you're good.
Okay. That's why I was asking because I have no.
Okay, thanks.
That was a tough lead-in to your next topic of.
But, Tom Jordan was on the news, so hopefully we, we do get some grants. He's starting to put the word out that we need some more money. So, we'll see what it brings. Alrighty, so, as you mentioned, this is a big part of.
Can we set up a GoFund?
I'll have it ready by the morning.
We need a big benefactor.
Okay, so, the tentative budget, finally here to talk about and discuss and present. So, assumptions, before we dive into a lot of it, just real quick on the continued economic growth. When I sent this out to you, all these different financial institutions, all we're looking, next year's pretty good. Not great, but good. And then in the weeks since I've sent you this, there's been a lot more talk of recession. So.
There's what?
Talks of recession of the upcoming year. So, I'll be watching this closely to see where, you know, the war goes because that'll significantly affect us. So, anyways, just to, it says that, hey, everything's good for next year, but right now, it's, we'll see where it goes. So, I guess what I'm saying is I'll monitor this closely. Dale and I will be looking at it and so, to see if we need to significantly adjust what we have for the rest of the budget that I'll be presenting. We should be getting the rest of our ARPA fund in July. That tranche should be 480,000. There's a small chance that we only get a portion of that and then the next tranche would come in fiscal year 24. But, with how small of an amount compared to other cities, I'd be surprised if we don't get the full amount of our money this summer. So, that's been budgeted in there. Another big driver and assumption is the mayor pool increase of 4% to help with inflation for employees, as the next bullet point is. So, it's trying to keep the talent we have and also balance the incoming expenses for all our different things. Yeah.
So, are the ARPA funds available for road? I can't remember.
No. The, we've, we've thought of them for secondary water. We were, we were gonna run a supply line to a water tank and kind of kickstart that first phase using ARPA funds. They did come out and say that ARPA funds can be used, specific authorization to purchase a fire truck. Santa Clara, Ivans, we are soon in need of a ladder truck. In fact, Santa Clara was talking about possibly budgeting for that and moving forward with the purchase of a ladder truck a couple of years ago. And we said, we don't, we don't have the money for that in our budget. I don't think they're budgeting for it this year. But, as we have these larger projects come on in both cities and more commercial, you know, Santa Clara is getting quite a little commercial center there. And there will be a need for a ladder truck in the not-too-distant future. Now, St. George will continue to work with us and we have a mutual aid agreement with them. They have a ladder truck at Station 7. And they're happy to, you know, bring it over on a, on a fire call that requires a ladder truck. That's if it happens to be in the station. And so, we're getting close to that. It can also, that money can also be used to purchase police vehicles. And as you know, Bob has a need to, his plan is to redo his fleet by buying two every year so that after five years, he's basically replenished his fleet. And five years of use in, in public safety is a lot of miles. And so, there's a need to replace a vehicle in that time. And so, so those are immediate public safety things that. And so, so those are immediate, um, public safety things that, um, ARPA funds can be used for. But as far as the infrastructure, uh, we were thinking of, uh, the secondary water. Uh, but right now that's, um, on hold pending the reservoir. No use putting in a, a, a water tank if we don't have a supply of secondary water. And so, um, we'll have to see what happens there, but, um, those are kind of our, our plans. That's why, um, this year's ARPA report was, we haven't spent anything. We don't technically have to commit, um, on plans for those ARPA funds until twenty twenty-four. And, and so we, we've got some ideas that, that do qualify and that will use those ARPA funds, but, but right now we're just kind of holding it and seeing, um, what comes forward first.
Can he use for a sweeper?
No.
Nope.
If I'd only let you finish, right?
Oh, this is great. It's good to have discussion. This is awesome.
Okay, good, because Chuck, so the, the secondary system, what, what I'm hearing Dale say is that pointless to spend money now for something that we can't charge at this point?
Well, and I think we also want to do one more study before we build the secondary irrigation system because we are due to, uh, update our secondary water and sewer, uh, capital facility plans. So I think we go through one more study too. I, I wouldn't mind, you know, taking one more look at that idea of, you know, do we build a treatment plant instead of an irrigation system in that study too? Just to make sure we feel like, I know Lance has been a, been arguing that we just go straight to building a treatment plant. I, I don't think it's, um, I, I don't like ruling that out necessarily right away. Uh, and so I would like to do that study too. That's why I've also kind of held back a little bit on the irrigation system.
So that's not immediate. I mean, even if the reservoir, even if the, all of the testing was done and the agreement was signed and so forth, they're still, what, three years out anyway from being able to complete that and filling it. And it also is dependent on, on the treatment plant capacity being expanded to provide the, the storage water for it, right? Am I understanding that right? So, so Dale, your point is that since we have these other significant needs that we postponed this until, until it becomes a, an urgent need, huh?
Yeah, we'll, we'll see which comes forward first and the other project may be something that we have to bond for. Um, it just depends on what our revenues look like at that particular time. But, um.
But we can't use the ARPA funds for the road improvements?
No.
But Cade has found between, you know, between impact fee funds and other budget items, two point eight million dollars that we could put towards Highway ninety-one today without a bond.
Right. What's our obligation on phase one of phase two?
So right now, uh, I think the proj, we don't know what the project's gonna be. It's really hard to determine that. But right now we're estimating seven point seven million dollars. We have already in funding about four point nine or something like that. So that's where the two point eight comes from, is, is that would fill that gap. We could, we could probably bid it out, we hope, we could bid it out and, and fund it.
I love the idea of funding because the bond costs are just gonna be outrageous now, I'm afraid.
And then if we do get that grant from Congress, from the bill, then we could use that and apply that to the next phase.
I guess if I let you finish, I'd know whether or not we actually could pull that off. So what, what, what other funding do we have on, on the, on phase one of phase two?
What's all the funding?
You say we have, we have two point eight. The total project?
Is like seven point five and we've got almost five million dollars of, of fine, funding for it.
Aside from our two point eight?
Aside from our two point eight, yeah.
So you're, you're basically saying we can build that section without bonding?
Without bonding. Unless, unless prices run away from us, as we're trying to get right away.
This is just phase one.
This is to six hundred west.
To six hundred west, from two hundred east to six hundred west.
So if we did bond to, to try and do something.
We could bond to do the next phase plus maybe add Puerto or, or maybe we.
Not, not do the next phase. I mean, we're anticipating, aren't we? Waiting a period of time for the last phase and seeking the, these same sources of funding that we have on the current phase under discussion, right?
We could try, yeah.
I, I think you, Mayor, sorry. I thi, I, I mean, as I didn't listen to what we're going, doing is, is it's, it's, when you start widening it, then you gotta go all the way and that's where the money's gonna come in. If you can figure out just to resurface it, to, for traffic safety, that's a, that's a pretty simple task.
But if you're talking about non-travel lanes, if you're talking about cycling shoulder, that's a different animal.
Well, you still gotta go to the bottom of the hill and come back up. So when you're doing, when you're building your toes or your, your slopes. So when you build that.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Oh, you're, you're saying that there's a lot more involved than just widening pavement here.
That's correct.
You're widening it, you still gotta, you gotta build out your shoulders.
There's no shoulders out there. It's all.
Drops right off.
It's right, right off. And I would say if we're trying to meet that criteria, you just said, well, we're, we want to, uh, get other funding, we should just, just be doing the resurfacing of it and then try for other refunding because once you start building shoulders, you're doing a project and.
Yeah, I see your point.
And just for, uh, inf, curiosity information is back in the nineties, we built a million dollars for, for the Bangor Highway from one twenty-six south to Redwood. And if you went to Phoenix where there's houses and you have all this stuff being built around it, it was twenty-five million for the same amount of, so when you, if you can do it when it's virgin, that's your cheapest money. And that's why I said when we're doing projects, if you think about it before everybody gets in there, starts accessing them stuff, your cost will, your savings will outweigh your bonding. Because once people are in there and you're trying to work around traffic, your costs just go sky high.
Yeah, I mean, the object is that we finished this first phase and I'm hearing you say we can do, do that without a bond. And Lance is saying, don't go beyond just bringing the rest of that up to a safe condition, right? Without, without widening it for the cycling lanes?
I mean, you're, you've got two levels of safety. One is for bikes and one is for traffic. And so far, the ru, road is so rough when you're riding it, the traffic's doing this, right? And so.
So i, if a cycling lane has no load on it, no trucks, no cars. Does that change what could be done on the shoulder to support that? Because you're talking about nothing in the way of load.
Well, you can't.
Usually we don't do it that way because you're expecting that heavy traffic. Maybe at some time, if you do some more widening, you're gonna move the load over and then you'd have to tear that all out if you did it.
Yeah, if somebody pulls over, they're gonna use that lane no matter what.
Yeah, we typically keep.
I know a company that can go out there and get that bicycle worthy, I'll tell you that.
But you'd, you, I mean, all it would take is a truck to pull off and you just move it all.
Crush it.
Okay.
The fire truck could be the worst.
This feels like a separate agenda item.
I think it is. Very like Cade finished, then we come back to it.
It's all great. It's all part of the budget, so thanks for bringing your questions up. Thanks Chuck for all the clarification. Okay, so the next few slides are gonna be high-ticket items, um, you know.
May I ask one more question? Dale? Well, and you. So if we have the resources to bond, why, is there a reason why we wouldn't do that? I mean, with bonds, you've got the upfront costs and then, then a high rate of interest and long-term, there's a lot of additional costs associated with that.
Um, yes, bonding is expensive. So if you have the money without bonding, um, then I think it's better to proceed, um, that way. For projects that are beyond your reach, what, beyond your, um, self-funding capabilities, then you would consider bonding and you would pay the expenses of, of going through the bonding process and, but you'd be spreading out your payments over twenty to thirty years. And, and so, um, yes, ultimately the total cost of that, uh, is more, but your ability to pay it was easier. And, and then you also have increasing revenues coming online and so that should make the, the payments easier as you go on and possibly pay it off early, which we've done on some.
Would either of you see a reason, given other requirements on the budget, not to do it without a bond?
I'm a little confused.
Do either of you see, based on current needs, a reason why we, um, wouldn't bond it?
It's first phase?
Yes.
I mean, if we have the money currently right now, I'd rather save our debt capacity for another project.
I would too. Yeah, so, so we have, we have the, the funds to where it, we would be able to do Highway ninety-one to six hundred west. And, um, you know, just as soon as we can get that out to bid, uh, we could get started on that. So it's, it's been kind of a, a frustrating process to get the right of way, which keeps delaying the bids and so the costs go up and. But right now, we could do it without bonding. And, and we would save the bonding to, um, do something with the remainder of the, of Highway ninety-one out to the border.
So Mayor.
Can we go buy the asphalt, Chuck? Can we just go buy it now and stockpile it down there?
So, I mean, one, one thing, like this building, what do we build it for? And you've made the statement that it would have cost X amount more dollars if we'd have done it, if we wouldn't have done it when we did it, right? And so looking at it is we gotta look at safety. We look at the utilization, enjoyment of the people, what they're getting out of it. And does our bonding cost, is it, is it less than inflation rates for the future? You know, are we increasing the value today with our cost of our, and I'm not saying yes or no, so nobody can. I'm, I'm asking the question, is today's value of bonding less, gonna be less expensive than tomorrow's cost of money because of the inflation rates? Because we're writing a curve right now. If we caught on, I think we'd be doing pretty good. If we wait, we might be worse.
Yeah, but, but the other point he's bringing up is if we reserve our bond, if we reserve our bonding capacity for a future project, we, we don't indenture ourselves now, basically.
But we're enjoying the asset now too. So that's, we just gotta find out what the public want, if they want to enjoy the asset or, or not.
Well, you enjoy the asset either way, even if you bond for it.
No, I'm saying if we, if we, if the public says, yes, we'd rather have a bike lane out on Highway ninety-one, we'd rather have the thing, the shoulders widened out, we'd rather have a nice paving job all the way to the reservation and we want to enjoy that asset today, what's the cost of enjoyment?
And I want to have a GoFund, let all those people who want that.
That's their, that's why there's a city. We gotta decide who wants it or doesn't want it.
You're right, and it's you guys, it's your decision, not mine. But I, I would love to see what the cost of bringing. The, the fundamental point is if, if we can get the portion of ninety-one that is not currently needed for, for development that exists in this other section, if we can postpone that for ten years, do something that allows that existing road to be, you know, um, utilized for another period of time. We put ourselves in a totally different environment, I realize, in ten years and it could be stratospheric again and inflation could be whatever it's gonna be. But it does strike me that, that given the potential revenue streams that, that we may have then that we do not have now, that that might be a whole, a whole lot easier pill to swallow than, than bonding for the whole thing now.
Right, and, and that's, that's how we've been approaching it up until this point. We're just looking at, what's the, what's the best alternative? How much do you get for the, how much pain do you get for the buck, as they say? And which alternative would be the best, um, to get us down the road like, like that? To get it down to our last seven to ten years. And some revenue streams kick in and, and other options open up. How cheaply can we do that and, and still have it, um, be a workable solution? And, and that's what, you know, Chuck's gonna have to take a, a hard look at, but, but that would be on the heels of getting this project at least well underway, um, to six hundred west. And so we gotta, we've gotta get that going first. But we are, we are looking at it as a, as a possibility that, and I, I don't know, maybe we'll, we'll have discussions and maybe Chuck will correct me, but, as a possibility that sometime next fiscal year, we, we begin that process too. So, anyway. And, and it'll just depend on, you know, how much money we have to do what, but, you know, there's some big projects out there that are, um, safety-related that really take a priority to what we're doing. And, um, so we're gonna have to take a, a close look at those.
We're gonna wear you out before we can get to the agenda item you came back for.
Oh, this was part of it. I wanted to be here for this discussion.
So Mayor, one more statement on this. If, on Highway ninety-one where we get killed is when they're working on the roads down there. You know, they shut down and they do that. It's becoming, ever since I've lived here, it's just keeps getting more and more regular, even the better they get the road. And I'm, I'm gonna tell you, one day, literally I sat there probably for seven, eight minutes, then I finally just went across. It's that, it, when the road shut down on it, it's so, that's where our safety, you know, I wish we could, and Chuck's, we talked about it, we've even tried looking for funding for it, but if we could get some help from the state because of, they're using our road as a freeway, it's just, that's our, you know, and we, we've looked at avenues, he's looked, but. Yeah, yeah, I know, I know. But there's a reality to it too. We just gotta get someone to understand what they're doing to our little city.
I think we got sucker punched on ninety-one. I had it off to the county and then the county added it off to us. I don't, why did we even want it?
Now, there is a disadvantage in if the state did take it over, because then.
Oh, I know.
Because then they probably wouldn't let us put roundabouts on it and they'd have all other sort of things they'd make us do, but.
But I, I'm just trying to think how, because that's where a lot of the safety issues, that's when traffic is the greatest.
Right.
And when I've talked to the state about taking it over, they said the only way we'd take it over is we could take it all the way back to one of our other state routes, which is all the way back up to St. George Boulevard. Well, I guess I think they take.
Which takes it through Santa Clara and.
Which takes it through Santa Clara.
That's never gonna change. According to Mayor Rosenberg.
Our only real hope for funding is through the MPO, some of these funds that they put out for applications and then now that US Congress is doing earmarks again, that's our, that's our last hope.
But if we have, if we get this section done that we're working on now, then we have time to work these other angles for, for a future section, right? Otherwise we take it all on ourselves.
Once we get this project done, we're, we're decades down the road before we're gonna need major help, yeah.
And the only, the only thing I'd ask is if we look at what the cost is to widen, well, so it's finished when we're done those, that area, you know, because it's a, it's got Movara, you got the.
It wouldn't hurt to have some extra lanes through there, for sure.
And if it's reasonable, then we can look at that and see, so.
So if you don't mind checking on that and finding what the cost, a, a potential cost might be to make the rest of it safe at least and extend its life a little. Hi, Cade. We're back to you.
Any questions so far? This is great, this is.
Are you mocking me?
No, this is, this is the most important part of the budget, so this is great. Thanks Chuck for being here to provide all this detail too. Okay, well, we're on slide two of one hundred, so I guess I better get going. Okay, well, we're on slide two of one hundred, so I guess I better get going. Um, so Lance's favorite street sweeper will be purchased um this upcoming year, supposed to be this fiscal year. Um, but due to supply shortages, it's getting pushed into next year, so that'll be allocated between streets fund and then the enterprise funds, so water, storm drain, sewer. Um, Chuck's finally given up on a vehicle after, I don't know, twenty, was it twenty years? So we're gonna get Public Works a new vehicle, um, one of theirs is dying. Um, and then an expansion and upgrade of the, I I, it says new Public Works startup, that's my, that's my bad, it's just an expansion and an upgrade, right?
Chuck, are we gonna keep the old sweeper? I I talked to, just as in for reserve and part-time use?
Um, some of their high-priced items, road maintenance, four hundred thousand, um, and some street lighting, so a lot of that got pushed into next year as well, we were gonna do some this fiscal year. But with inflation, unfortunately, we didn't get to it, and it's gonna be more expensive for fiscal year twenty-three.
Is the Public Works yard for the new one down there or to remodel this one up? The one, okay, that's to help get it going, right? Okay.
Thanks, Chuck. Thanks for the question, Lance. Um, so speak of the devil, Highway ninety-one, so what we're gonna do as we amend fiscal year twenty-two's budget, we're gonna take an extra two hundred thousand from our surplus this year that we're budgeted for, put it towards capital projects in the next year as well, um, transfer fifty thousand dollars over to capital projects to help get to that two point eight million for the Highway ninety-one.
I don't know if you touched on it, but as far as the previous budget goes, are are we taking anything out of reserve now, or are we putting something into reserve?
Yeah, so um
Or is that in here?
What it's looking like, it's in here, but not, anyways, yeah, so what it's looking like to finish off the year, we'll have close to around six hundred thousand of a surplus. Um, and and that's on top of a half million dollars going towards capital projects, so we'll have half million go to capital projects and then surplus of six hundred thousand. It could be better than that. Um, so we will have a surplus this year to add to the general um reserve fund. But then, as the budget showed, we'll also be taking that away next year. So we're having a great year, and then next year, we're gonna use it to 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 get these projects going and uh get the sweeper, things like that.
But we haven't taken anything out of the reserve fund so far this year, so you'd be adding to that and then essentially bringing us back to where we are, which is a pretty solid place, isn't it?
I think we're at twenty-three percent.
It would be right around twenty-five percent at the end of next year, next fiscal year twenty-three. The maximum we can do is thirty-five percent.
Oh, I, yeah, they've increased it. Um, so, Mr. Mayor, um, surplus could easily be a misunderstood term. It's because all these projects got pushed into next year um that there's extra money in the budget this year that's then going to the budget next year, and it's gonna be spent next year, so if you take both years together, there is no surplus. It just got, the timing of it got moved to the next fiscal year instead of this fiscal year, so. It's not, it's not that we, you know, have all this extra money laying around, it it's, it's all, it's all earmarked, it was earmarked this year, and now it's got pushed into next year.
Gotcha.
Thanks for the clarification, Dale. Yep. Um, so that two point eight million, uh, how we're getting there, we'll have, thanks to the coming under budget for this building, the police remodel, and then as well, using capital project reserve fund. Um, we're gonna essentially drain the capital funds project to get to that two point eight million, we'll be transferring over, assuming we continue with billing permits and getting impact fees, a million from the street impact fees fund. Um, and then as well, that two hundred and fifty thousand from the general fund, so that's how we get there. Um, for the trails, we have, if the trails end up being more than six hundred thousand for Highway ninety-one, we have more park impact fees that we can use. Uh, that's a placeholder for now, so we'll see what the bid comes back. Um, cemetery expansion, it was fifty thousand this year, things got a little tricky, and so it's now up to a hundred and fifty thousand for fiscal year twenty-three.
This is on the existing cemetery site?
Correct. Um, and then we're holding a hundred and seventy-five thousand on our placeholder for potentially uh the front entry for the police building next year. We'll see where we're at, obviously, if we need to put safety first instead of aesthetics, then then we'll look at that when we get there, but we have that as a placeholder for now. Um, and then the enterprise fund, uh, as Chuck mentioned, the first phase, a little under two million. Um, and that'll all be funded with uh water impact fees. First phase, anyway, we'll see how the rest of the phase goes, or if we need to put that on hold. Um, and a a tank coating for two hundred and sixty thousand.
So Kate, on the cemetery, how many plots will that add to the cemetery?
That is a great question, I'll have to follow up with Benny and get that to you.
Just calculate the dollars, see if we repay ourselves.
No, I'll I'll get with Benny and and get that answer for you. Any other questions so far, now that we've actually made some progress on the budget?
We could just ask everybody to live a couple of years longer, we wouldn't have to do that right now either.
Um, based on the pace of Black Desert, Mike has requested that they start looking for a new building, an additional building inspector, to have somebody dedicated to Black Deserts and and their inspections and and that whole deal, so we're requesting an additional building inspector.
I did have a question about that, and maybe Fred, you can answer it. Oftentimes, on specialized projects or sizable projects, cities will require that the developer hire a and and uh an inspector. For that, I I I know of that happening a couple of times, even down here, that I'm aware of. Do you, do you know, is that, is that a legitimate option to?
Um, from my experience, typically, it's more of a uh quality assurance and quality control, so they call it QCQA. Um, but as far as, uh, that's more for the structural element. Once it becomes um as far as building code, uh, then the jurisdiction takes
Okay.
So.
So this needs to happen, then?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, I'm putting here, they used to have a, you used to have to go to a third-party structural engineer for commercial buildings here, I had to on my office because it got busy and then it went away, so that was for structural engineer.
Is it, is it cheaper just to have these guys, pay these guys overtime and? I'm kidding.
I'm all for that, I mean.
It it actually could be.
It it might be.
I'm serious, because by the benefit package? Yeah, I mean, I would, I'd, if they're willing, Mayor, I'd rather enhance their life than if Ma, if Dale's okay with it, than hiring a person. If they're
But there's gonna be money there either way, right? It's gonna cost more because we've got the this volume of work now that
So for a couple of years, um, as long as it's in the structural phase, we probably can handle it for a bit. But it wa, once it gets farther along, that's when it's Yeah, so for for a good year or two, I think we're sitting okay, depending on the volume, obviously, of the residential that's happening ground. But um, uh, it 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 is gonna get more intensive as the building gets completed.
Yeah, so while they're working on, while they're working on concrete and steel,
Yeah.
that's not you guys going out and ensuring that the insulation and drywall and everything else is done right, it's, that's the structural engineer certifying that it's done correctly?
Yeah, it's a, yeah, a third-party uh special inspectors. Um, and I'm actually covering some of that right now, because I am certified as a structural uh special inspector.
Oh.
Um, but I mean, they're still a third party uh through AGC and stuff like that, but uh, so for right now, I can cover it uh and then do you know, the rest of it, needs to be done. So that's, that's why I was saying, uh, for at least, I I mean, it's hard to foresee, but at least for a year, maybe more, we should be able to handle it.
Kate, you said, any questions?
This is great, I'm just surprised, I haven't heard from Mike yet. No, I'll, we'll revisit this with Mike then and just
These are money questions, not a
He's taking notes, you're gonna
Mayor, a comment about the comedian here.
I've just learned from the best.
I've, I've complimented him before, I I did send him, he he's given me a bad time, because I I sent him an email with probably a dozen questions on it. And, you know, sort of hard, sort of drilled-down kind of stuff, and within an hour or two, he comes back with just great explanations. So I can sit here very quietly tonight, because I have all my questions answered, and I'm going to be sending all of you an email with my comments, so, so Kate, thank you, I I am really impressed with
Yeah.
how detailed you are in your responses and how responsive you've been, so.
I wonder if you had indigestion over there or something. Very unlike you.
What happened to me?
Well, we'll take a look at this with with Mike Hickok and and Fred and see exactly if maybe it needs to be pushed out further, but we'll we'll review this one. One I forgot to leave off, um, you know, Dale, after all these years, finally thinks he needs some help, so we're starting to put together um, a package to get a ci- city deputy attorney to kind of help lighten his load with, I don't know, I guess, hard stuff, attorney stuff, you know? So, that's not on there, but that's something that's in the budget, is adding a city deputy attorney.
He's getting pretty comfortable, Dale. What? He's getting pretty comfortable.
Hey, with all the stuff that's coming out of this legislative session, um, there needs somebody to be drafting full-time.
You you just look at the, I don't know how you've done it up to now, all the, all of these big projects with complicated development agreements and the time it takes to represent the city's interest on that.
So long overdue. Um, as we continue, again, this is just a chart of the general fund revenues, the tax revenue specifically. Property tax continues to be uh the lion's share of the city's revenue, sales and use tax is slowly getting closer, and ob, as we've talked about with commercial projects, um, transit room tax and that, sales and use tax will continue to diminish the, or or help diversify our tax revenue. Um, as we continue to grow.
Now, let's see that, you don't really have to use the LRV colors on these, and change them a little bit so we can see them better.
Noted, noted, I'll uh, thank you, Lance, appreciate it.
Nice segue.
Here's just a breakdown of uh year-over-year analysis of our, you know, our tax, charges for services, all of our different revenues. And where we're looking to end next fiscal years are total uh general fund revenue, about nine and a half million. Um, any questions on what we heard so far? Nope, okay. Breakdown and kind of
Now, that doesn't include the enterprise funds.
No, this is just the general fund, yep. Here's a breakdown of each of the departments by expenditures, so uh, you know, law enforcement's the top dog, obviously, that makes sense with all the employees they have and all the equipment, um, so just a breakdown there. The general government, just as a heads up, so the part we paved to Santa Clara for fire and EMS, they're guessing around twenty percent increase because of the new additions to the fire department, so I think two or three new employees and then the new fire chief. Um, so we'll see an increase in the in the general government expenditure department.
Despite that, it's, is it still your belief that we we save significant revenue by ha, by having this, this agreement in place?
I haven't done enough of a deep dive, I would assume so, then that's why, those year, many years ago, that's why it was, why it was done, but
I mean, I'll say that because I have enough people approaching me saying, bring our fire back, because we want to have closer coverage. And I don't, are you getting that kind of?
Well, that's part of what this involves, um, our new fire chief uh wants uh to have this be a manned station.
Oh.
And so, this is for, I think it covers three additional employees to man this station.
I don't mind it, then, if that's what's coming out of it.
And and to pay, you know, a higher wage to this new fire chief, so um, I I think this increase is justified.
Thank you.
Mayor, I think he wants to do a study, and I think we ought to get that done sooner or later, where the best place to put another fire station in case somebody wants to build one in another city, and we, and we're paying part of it, we want to have our, we want to look at our city just too, you know, in case we ever do break off.
But I'm glad to know that, because that that's gonna mean something to a lot of folks.
Yes.
We need to, if that materializes, we need to get that word out. Continue.
Um, now going in the enterprise funds, so nothing too out of ordinary year-over-year increase, um, the Water Conservancy District, we're scheduled for another water increase, right, in July? Um, so the revenues are based on a, for water, storm drain, sewer, all seven percent increase um from prior year. Um, nothing too drastic or um that needs to come to your attention right now. For the operating expenses, um, as you can see, for the past few years, irrigation project, we budgeted for it, and then for some reason or another, it gets pushed into next year, so we got those two um bar graphs there. And then the non-operating expenses here is gonna be about um the portion that the enterprise funds paid for these buildings and other capital projects. Storm drain revenues, um, those two non-operating revenues are from grants, so those are one-offs, um, other than that, again, we see a seven percent increase um projected for fiscal year twenty-three, um, and no grants I'm aware of coming our way. Expenses, um, the large non-operating expense is the water detention basin project. Uh, we have that budgeted, um, that project specifically, not that full bar, is around three hundred thousand dollars to finish off that project.
Which one is that? Is that the new one of? Yeah. Okay.
And the sewer revenues, again, year-over-year, uh, pretty normal in terms of what we're seeing in with the water. Uh, we're projecting another seven percent increase in the revenue, assuming growth and and uh historical data, and then same with the expenses, so nothing, nothing that jumps out here. So to wrap up, um, it is a balanced budget, we, you know, as Dale mentioned, we're having this excess this year, but we're using it next year, so it's really a wash year-over-year. Um, and we, as, you know, we've talked a lot about the the hot topic items with Highway ninety-one and bonding and what do we do with the city's assets. Um, and then it is conservative. One thing, though, that I tweaked this year in previous years, um, we would always sandbag our revenues, so we're like, we'd be too conservative, so this year, we still were conservative, but it was more realistic to try and make it so I don't get up here every time and just say, hey, things are great, we're about beating budget, so we did a little more realistic uh forecasts of what the revenues will come in at. Next steps, um, whatever items you want me to review and change and modify, I will, and then for the fifth, so the next city council meeting, I'll have the actual budget document for your review. Um, if things look good and you tentatively approve that, then we'll have the public hearing um on May nineteenth. And then if all continues to go well, we'll have it approved by the end of June, once the county gives us the property tax, um, that will be due. So those are the next steps. Any questions?
Counsel?
Nope. Just let him sit down.
Thank you.
You'll be seeing a lot from me, so this was a good start. Thanks, Kate.
Thanks for thinking of that, Mike, that was a good move.
Yeah, thanks, Mike.
Okay, we're gonna jump back to item five B now, and continue the discussion on light reflectivity.
I move with the jury.
I've got that table of uses still out there, too.
That'll be quick.
Huh?
That'll be quick.
Okay. So, here's where we stand on on LRV. Um, we've heard Councilmember Johnson voice the opinion that that if we do continue to have any, any requirements on on color, that we need to be very careful how far we go with that, and she paid homage to the earliest settlers here who who had a variety of colored homes and so forth. Um, I I think, before we get get into the details of this, we need to decide as a council whether or not we're going to continue to pursue this in in light of state law and and the difficulties we have associated with that. So this is, this isn't a vote, but I just want to poll the council and find out if you, if your interest is in continuing to pursue this and try and develop a more sophisticated ordinance.
Can we have a comment?
Huh?
Okay, we'll have a comment, or you want to just
Sure.
I mean, I think one of the things, as we're thinking about this, is this doesn't just relate to the residential. It's, to me, it's just as important for our commercial and our townhomes and our apartments and
If we have an ordinance, it applies universally.
But that's what I'm saying, the state did not take that right away from us.
Oh, thank you, yes, oh, that's, yeah, very, very important point, actually.
And so, we just gotta remember, we're not just, we're not talking about just the residents, we're talking about
So, you're, I think what I'm hearing you say is, we would do this whether it included residential or not, thank you.
And I'm for doing it and including residential, so, yeah, I'm I'm on board with
And I'm for doing it and including residential, so, yeah, I'm I'm on board with still keeping some type of-
Just FYI, I had my moment in a caucus meeting today, right, Mike? Basically said, League of Cities and Towns, fix this mess. Once again, thank you, developers on the legislature.
Did they listen?
Mayor?
Yes.
You you did stir the pot a bit, and you got a lot of people excited with you at that meeting, so good for you.
Yeah, they're they're, we attended, Mike and I were there, and we attended a caucus for resort communities, which we are rapidly becoming. And
Per gen-.
We had, well, name name some of the communities. We had Park City, Springdale was there, Draper.
Moab.
Moab. There were several.
Yeah.
And they all they all felt exactly like I do. They're and they actually tried very, very hard to get that color ingredient out of that bill. And the negotiations had gone on for so long that they finally said, we're just done talking about it and passed it like it is.
So there's a good example for, or sample example for us to learn from. Let's not just pass something because we've been doing it for a long time.
Well, that wasn't the lesson I was going for, but that's a good point.
Well, I took both your lessons, I understood.
So and then, so Mike, I assume you're interested in pursuing this?
Yeah, I we we've been regulating building color, I think we need to continue. And and Lance is right, I mean, the the state was only only took that control away from us on single family and two-family, right? And so anything else, we're supposed to be, you know, regulating those colors anyway. So the question is, how? And I think the problem is, you know, there are some problems with the way it's currently written, it's pretty subjective.
What what is most offensive to me is that the legislature, I know because I've talked to a couple of legislators now, the legislature was sold on this based on housing affordability. And color has absolutely nothing to do with that. They they were fed a line of BS and and now now we're stuck with what we're trying to do to rescue this incredible place where we live. And the people in Moab feel the same way, the people in Springdale feel the same way. This never should have happened, and it has, it has absolutely nothing to do with what they were focusing on when they when they passed this piece of legislation. I won't see any more. They probably have ways to get back at us. So that being the case, then, I mentioned to, I think it was Dave Robinson, that we had a secret weapon. And we do. Mighty Mike. Who has done, in his typical fashion, considerable research on how other communities that have dealt with color have done it in such a way that it's not a subjective nightmare for enforcement. And he invited me to come and take a look at what his findings were. And and I found it to be really fascinating and asked that he pass that on to the rest of the council. So I think to introduce it into the public record, once again, Mike, I'm going to turn your direction and ask you to to sort of summarize what what that research led to and how that might fit with with our, the current problem we're facing here.
Thank you, Mayor. So my basic approach to things is to do as little original thinking as possible and get information from other places. I figure somebody's already dealt with this. So I I did a little research and I met with the community development director at Springdale, Tom Dancy. And he walked me through what they do on building colors. And I also talked through email and on the phone with the basically the the building departments in Sedona and Scottsdale. And all three of them do something very similar, not exactly the same, but very similar. First, they they use a book called the Muncell Book of Color. And that book has 40 pages in it. Each page is a different hue, hue meaning basically color. And each of those color pages then has a series of little paint chips in them. And some pages have 10 paint chips, some have 20, that sort of run for that particular color, sort of a whole range of chroma and a whole range of what they call values. And so you go from lighter to darker to more vibrant, less vibrant. And what all three cities do is they say, okay, well, we won't, we won't use all of the colors on any of the pages. They sort of set up a template to say, well, we'll we'll allow colors to go this vibrant, this high of a chroma or this high of a value, but that's all.
Value meaning LRVs.
Basically, it does. And so what what our current ordinance says is to use low chroma. Well, what's low? So the chroma numbers go from two to over 20. This book only goes up to like about eight or 10 on chroma. So but what's low chroma? Is low chroma up to six or eight? Or is it limited to two? So our ordinance doesn't really, it doesn't give the building department really the right kind of guidance. And then our ordinance did have, you know, LRVs not to exceed 38. The Muncell book uses a value system, basically just a number system like one to 10. But but a seven on their value is, I think, around a 42 LRV. There's a formula to calculate it. And so that's that's the way all all three work it. They're all, all three cities, they're looking to basically focus on the natural environment rather than the built environment, which has been the philosophy or the intent of what our ordinance was. Ours was just too subjective. So that's that's the summary. And so I just put together a summary of that and gave everybody just a a copy of what the Muncell book page looks like. But it's not a very accurate color rendition because it just came off the internet and I went down to get color copies. I I I did ask Tom Dancy if I could borrow his book. He said, no. Dale won't like this, but the Muncell book costs $1,362 and I guess plus sales tax. And so the way all these building departments work with it is the book stays at the building department. And but you come in and and when you put this template down, it's very easy to see if the color sample that the homeowner or the builder's bringing in fits within their template area or not. It's it's totally objective. And you, and so you can create as wide or a narrow range as you want. So my recommendation would be if if you like this idea, then first step would be to bite the bullet and buy the book. Unless you can convince Tom Dancy to let us borrow it for a week or two.
No, Mike's not feeling well tonight, but he'll be thrilled to learn that we spent $1,000 of his budget.
Oh, so we can spend money whenever somebody's not here, right?
Yeah, that's within my authorization.
So we got a book, then?
And then go through the book and say, well, because Springdale, Sedona and Scottsdale, they they, their templates for what they allow are all almost identical, but not completely. We'll come up with our own, that probably won't be identical to theirs, so. But we need to really look at the book to see what it looks like. And these are, again, you can tell because the book's so expensive, the these are just individual color chips. They're true colors, so it's just very easy to, you know, work with. And so they'd say, we get the book and then we get public input, we get expert input on just what what are the ranges we're going to work with. We can show them what the templates are that these other cities use and then say, okay, let's see, are we going to use the same or something different?
See, and I like the idea, when I read through it, too, is is that you can go up for some trims and stuff and you might go down for rock materials. So so because that, rock material is still going to be subjective to some level. But if you're in that realm, and that, everything's subjective to some level. I mean, when Dale reads a letter, interprets a letter, it's subjected to his interpretation, not saying he did it wrong, Dale, no. But the, so what I'm getting at is even Fred, if he has that color code and it's, it's doing rock, it's down lower. He can, he'll be still within the realm, you know? So I think I think it's a good idea.
So there, sorry. There are three or four issues we actually need to address besides hue, chroma and value or LRB. And that is, do we have districts in the city where where that that color palette might change? And I would suggest this. I think what might be appropriate, for example, out in the vicinity of Black Desert in the Lavas, could be a different, a different set of, a different range of color. And like in your project, Lance, where where south of, south of 91, looking back towards that mountain is a different, different thing than looking towards this mountain, and maybe the flexibility is different there or the... So I think that that is one, one thing that our conversation ought to include, besides just these three basic elements of color. And then the one that has struck me is we need to have a clear definition of what trim is and what what, how those percentages apply. Because when I draw, when I draw home, there are four elevations, right? There's a front, sides, two sides and back. And if if we interpret that, an accent, for example, a stone wall that is, that is outside this this spectrum, that if, if say, there's, that's, you're allowed 10% of that, that that, that that has to apply to a surface, not to the overall coverage area of all the elevations combined. So you'd put, literally pull that percentage off all four sides and put a great big, you know, panel of of a non-conforming color. So I think we need to identify what trim means and what the what the percentages of allowable trims are. And then back to you.
And that's basically it. Then I took information from the three cities and just put put together sort of a not a draft regulation, just ideas to incorporate in a regulation, yes, and it addresses the trim concept as as well, so.
So after we talked, Mike asked me if I'd like him to put together a draft ordinance. I said, well, Dale's going in for surgery, sure. Dale, have you considered Mike as your deputy? Do you have a law degree? I just wondered, just wondered.
He don't have time, he's got to do this.
Well, if I hired him-
Dale will have to do it.
If I hired him, he'd have to resign from council. I think he does more good on council than he does as an employee, so we'll leave him where he is and let him do the work that he does.
So Mayor, Mayor, I think one thing to note in our original, because what you just said is makes total sense that there's just areas. Okay, districts, areas, whatever. And that's why that one little clause in there, and people have used it, it says, your surrounding area. In our, the zone, what we have now, is because, can you imagine me taking a red brown house and putting it out in the middle of the volcanic rock or a white house? Because we have white rock up in Snow Canyon? No, that didn't, that's where that little statement got blown up. Well, we have volcanic rocks, can I put them on my houses out here? Or can I put brown, you know, it just didn't make sense. So that's why that one-
Well, and frankly, Kianda would would want to be a separate zone.
Well, yeah, I mean, they, well, but then people in Canada literally said, well, volcanic rock is part of the natural surrounding areas of Ivans. We've had people make that statement.
Yeah, you're right, I've heard that.
Well, so is fu- so is fuchsia, because we have flowers that are fuchsia that are on cactuses.
And we have the white rock up in Snow Canyon. So it's all, it's your surrounding area where you're building your house. And that's your area that you're referring to.
So the the procedural question is, how far do we want to try and go with this? I think it's often more productive if we just focus on pieces at a time. So we've now got this, these three important aspects that rely really on the book. And so counsel, would you want to authorize the expenditure to obtain this book, assuming that we're going to move the direction that these other cities have done?
If Dale can authorize it. Yes.
Well, I mean, Dale would want to buy it only with our-
Get a bond?
No, I know, I'm saying. I was being facetious because he said his limit was a thousand bucks.
Now, that's within my approval authority, but I would like to have a thumbs up from you.
Yes, no.
If you want to proceed that way, I don't want to buy a $1,000 book for no reason.
Yeah.
Well-
Fred. Go up to here, you're good. You've gotten curious now, Nelson.
Well, yeah, if I may recommend, because we were, I'm on the front line of this, and I think this is a great idea. I will say the, and don't take this the wrong way, but the LRV, I think, is going against the intent. Because if you look, I just look at ordinance and it says light grays and whites are prohibited. Well, I have no choice but except, except the light gray sometimes because it falls within the LRV.
Yeah, that's-
That turned, well, just just bear with me just, just for a second. And then, you know, that light gray turns into a a gray-blueish that we have in the Palisades. So I think your approach is really good because that gives us a definitive a color swatch, basically, you know, examples to go out of. And even for your different subdivisions and stuff that you were talking about, if you do, in your developer's agreement and stuff like that, you can actually put that in there, you know? This is the color palette for your subdivision type thing.
But that's negotiated, so if it isn't part of an ordinance, yeah.
Right.
It's a negotiation.
But it's it's an avenue that you guys can take and try to to go that direction. But right now, and and I've, I mean, I've shot a bunch of different colors with those LRVs. And I know our system, our little, I can't remember what they call it, is accurate to within one, plus or minus one. But you would not imagine the amount that it changes from, I mean, your eye can't even tell it, but our little LRV mechanism, if you would, will go off of six or 10 points. So and then you look at the house, one that's non-compliant right here, one that's compliant right there, you can barely tell.
Yeah.
So.
So the the important thing is, we we recognize that LRV was not a suitable, not a suitable way of evaluating color.
Absolutely.
And that's why, in fact, it's only one leg, if you will. Who came up with the three-legged stool thing?
That was Gordon O'Guardio.
Oh, Pam. That that hue and chroma and LRV or value are the three things that determine whether it works. And the thing you'll love is that the graph he's talking about covers all three of those. So there there won't be, there shouldn't be any question about it. I can see why this is an absolutely airtight way to go at this.
Yeah, that definitely gives us direction on how to take this because it's we, let's put it this way, we haven't made a lot of friends with that. And there is a lot of contention about this and and rightfully so. I mean-
Because it's too, it's been too subjective.
Well, it is, and it goes against your, the intent of-
Well, that, this is where, I just want to, in my my opinion, we, I've heard this statement made so many times and it drives me crazy. Well, it meets LRV, so does it meet the other two criterias?
Exactly.
We wouldn't have the hues in that if it met the other two criterias.
Well, the problem is we haven't had the other two criteria.
No, they're in there, they're in there, but they're hard, they're subjective. This is going to take it away so it's easier on him.
Yes, exactly.
And it gives us direction.
So, yeah, I mean, yeah, to Lance's point, because I I listened to all the planning commission meetings, and I think there's just, there's confusion with the current ordinance because I I my apologies if somebody here wrote it, but it is subjective. But there there was a misunderstanding that, oh, well, it meets the LRV, so we would have to approve it. No, it it has to meet the LRV, it also has to be an earth tone. Now, the definition of earth tone is it's a color that contains some brown, you know? So you you can't say that because there's white mountains up in Snow Canyon, that that's an earth tone. And that it also has to be a muted color and it has to be low chroma. There are four conditions. It it can't, it can't meet only one, it must meet all four conditions. The trouble is, LRV was the only concrete one, and the number that, the limit that we had, might not be right on it. The others were all totally subjective. So I think it's impossible for the building department to work with the current.
And it has been.
Yeah, and it's, and and I could see the contention, it's so frustrating. Because if if I'm dealing with something subjective like that ordinance, now, it's subjective in my own mind, too, and I know exactly in my mind what an earth color is today. But tomorrow, I might have a, just a different view of what an earth color is, so I'll- So I'll, I'll approve your color palette. And someone will come in tomorrow with the exact same color palette as you. I go, "Well, that's not what I call a muted tone or an earth color." You know, I mean, just, it's too subjective. Whereas if you've got something that's measurable, you're just like, well, it either fits or it doesn't.
And see, if we add what the mayor's saying, which will add a lot of work to our table, is the surrounding area. Which area does this palette, that's like, that could be three times or four times more work. So we have to decide, do we want to go to that level right now? And we might need to, to make this function, so.
Well, there are at least two basic areas. One, one is lava environment, one is mountain backdrop.
And some people say.
And the question is, is there a third that's kind of below ninety-one or, or near ninety-one where the backdrop is, is a south mountain instead of the river?
What, what I would see envisioned is you create the template and the template's going to work for most of the pages. And then you say, "Oh, well, but then we also have, agree, like in the lava." Well, the template, we need a different template for that.
Exactly.
And so, but you define that upfront. So again, it's not subjective. It just say, "No, in this location, because you're in the middle of, of all this lava, well, we're going to use template number two, you know, not template number one."
I think we should shoot for two templates. Because the, the color palette that I believe that's being used on Highway ninety-one, which I'm going to believe it because I created most of it, right? So it's the same, it works against the black drop. Yeah, the same as the red.
As the red, yeah.
In fact, I've been finding the volcanic rock against the red mountains with the black brush. It actually looks good with it, you know?
Sorry.
Okay.
So, um, Mike, did you include these, this Springdale?
That one I, um, I didn't, that was off of theirs, but I did include the, um, you know, the, the color version of these sheets.
So he gave me a copy of Springdale's actual ordinance and, um, Mike is, they did get this, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
So you have, it's sort of a, it's sort of a skeleton draft, right? Of, of the kinds of things that we, that we ought to address. Kind of getting late. Do you, do you want to try and go much further on this tonight or we set the framework?
Let's set the, I think we get the book and then let's figure out how we want to proceed.
Yeah, if you're, if you're game for the book, I think that, if, if you think that this is a good approach or if you agree that this is a good approach,
Yeah.
then let's get the book and start to define it. And then there's also then just how are you going to write
Yeah.
the ordinance or regulation.
We're not worried about that because we got you, so.
Well, I mean, so, so Mike, the, the important part of this is that we end up, like with the, like with the conservation ordinance, that we end up with something that you can actually, um, interpret correctly and enforce. And so that is the same objective here. It, it really, this whole exercise is about getting it to a point that it is, uh, workable it through our building department.
Yeah, this will take all the guesswork out of our, on our end. Because like you said, define chroma, you know, define muted. I'll see it this one way, you'll see it the other way. So one guy will approve one thing.
Yeah.
So I think this is, I mean, while it's in your hands.
So Fred, if we're talking about it, you ought to see if you can come to the meetings too, to help Mike.
Oh, I, absolutely.
Because you've got a good, we, your perspective, you know it is being told to you. And you know it's going to help you.
Well, and yeah, and I'm the one that
Yes.
deals with it, so, yeah, it's probably a good idea.
Mike, I think maybe one more quick step that we ought to take is, since the public has not been privy to this, let's just go through these basic elements that you identified here in this, uh, kind of draft skeleton here.
Oh, you want me to go through?
Well, you wrote it. So. So just go ahead and identify the various, um, elements here that you've, that you've included and, uh, so that, so that those who might be watching
Okay.
or Chris or anybody who's interested in where we're headed can know that now.
Okay, so this is a draft suggestion for, for the ordinance. You know, you just start off with, um, an, an intent, you know, what, why are we doing this? Um, and then applicability. This section applies to exterior surfaces of all new buildings or structure construction, including wall extensions from buildings and walls and fences. Then there's a section on non-conforming colors. And so existing structures, existing homes or existing anything, um, in the city that would have a current color that wouldn't fit with these templates that we're going to create are permitted to continue with that current color. And the way Springdale phrased it is, but they're only able to continue with that current color that doesn't comply. If they want to change that color, they have to change it to a color that complies. But if they want to keep repainting it,
Yeah.
that non-conforming color, they're welcome to do it.
I thought that was clever.
Yeah.
I think that's good.
And then I think the other thing to think about is, is, and I think Dale's used this on me. So is if you're pulling a permit to, to remodel or something, you know, what level does it need to comply? If somebody wants to add on, I thought about this and I don't want to burden people, but if someone adds on a small amount of a, you know, some six hundred square feet on a house, do we want them to have to paint their whole house?
That's, that is an issue we're going to have to deal with, for sure.
Yes, so.
Yeah, and, and, and Springdale's approach was if you add an addition to a house, any addition, I think, then you have to paint the addition colors that match our rules. But you can still keep your house the non-conforming color. And to me, that just looks, that would be a mess.
We got the pink house with the.
Pink house, pink house.
So, so I.
We already have an ordinance that says you got, you got to match the existing now.
And then, then of course the ordinance would, would define sort of what these templates are, what our ranges are. Uh, then, um, as the mayor pointed out, you deal with trim and accent colors. And so basically, uh, this language is, uh, "Accent elements and trims such as window casings, doors and door frames, soffits, railings, and banisters shall comply with the color palette standards in this ordinance. Uh, except that acceptable value ranges," and this came from all, all these cities, "shall be increased by one step up and down on the Muncell book." So the trim elements can be one step lighter, which is, you know, I don't know, ten, fifteen percent lighter or darker. And then, you know, evaluation of color, the app, and so this is something that I think this is happening now anyway, but it should be part of the ordinance is, uh, "The applicant shall, shall submit color chips or samples for all colors and materials to be used, along with the development application or building permit for individuals. The city will approve the color chip samples if they match the values and chroma permitted. Approval is required prior to construction."
Let me ask this question. So say you, we did, there was a development, say for Lake Heritage. There isn't one builder, I mean, they, other words, when the permit was, when that, uh, when the city, when the building permit was pulled, that's when they had chosen there if it wasn't just like one builder. So I don't know if we want to say that this person has to meet the color code unless the whole development wants to do that? Is that what we're saying? That every development has to meet this color code that's turned in at the time?
No, every single permit.
No, it has to meet this thing, but I'm saying, say the, I want to do a subdivision, but I want to require color on it. And I want to bring in and let each individual house because they're selling them to individuals instead of one builder. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, I, I think I understand. So you're going to build a twenty-unit subdivision, a twenty-home subdivision.
Yeah.
But you don't, you as the developer are building the twenty homes. You're going to sell them to twenty home buyers. And, but you want the home buyers to decide.
Or better, better yet, I'm going to build a twenty, I'm going to build twenty lots. And pads, lots. And I'm going to sell them to twenty different individuals because I, I'm not into the building. I don't have covenants or anything else. Are that, do they have to have a development agreement that they can only use these colors going in?
That would be with the developer, so that would be you.
That would be.
Yeah, no, I'm asking the question, do we want that, to require that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And then, um.
I'm, I'm thinking some like.
But then, because then you have a developer agreement, which is the exception to this state law. So you don't want to have, yeah.
I was being a little lenient there.
And then the last item was, was finishes. And this is what pretty, I think this is pretty much, uh, the same language we already have in ours. Reflective building and roofing materials, including materials with high gloss finishes and bright, uh, un-tarnished, uh, copper, aluminum, galvanized steel or other metallic surfaces shall be textured or have a matte or non-reflective surface treatment to reduce the reflection of sunlight onto other property. White or reflective roofs are permitted. The following materials and finishes are prohibited, uh, colored plastic and fiberglass, uh, unpainted or shiny metal. So, yeah, I think that is exactly the language we have now, but there's a problem with that. You know, we've got some issues of some highly reflective roof materials, metal, metal roofs that maybe it's, maybe it's the material or just the angle relative to the sun that really create a lot of glare. And so this probably needs a little more technical expertise and that's where I fall apart.
What, what, Mayor, what's the roof? I can't get the word out, but you, it's the roof where you, the metal roof that you put together in pieces. Because you have a corrugated roof like we,
Yeah, no.
like these houses out here in.
It's, it's an interlocking roof and I can't remember.
It's in our ordinance. It's a defined, we need to change it in one area. It's correct, one area it's wrong. I was reading, but I can't remember which one's which. But the, like for instance, the roof's an arrowhead, that corrugated metal. I literally was at my house when I lived up there and I thought they were re-roofing the roof. And I go, "Why are they doing that?" And I went down there. It's just a shine, the way the, depends on the time of year when you're driving down Quas. It's just a white shine.
So I mean, that's, that's a part of this.
Yeah. But I'm trying to think of the other type of roof because it has a more of a, it's pe- in pieces, so it doesn't quite give that sheen. That, look at the ones, we looked at the ones that in, by Harmon's, I think it's the correct type. The one in Santa Clara by the RVs, it's got that same interlocking roof.
I've used a lot of interlocking roof. I don't know that has a separate name.
Yeah, it, it's in our ordinance how, the way it's said a lot till try find it.
Okay, so counsel, that, uh, we're ready to move on from this then, okay?
Yep.
Resume it next. I, I don't know how long it takes to get this book, but we'll assume that this is going to be a continued discussion as early as next meeting, right? All right, item, uh, five C. We'll have a presentation and discussion regarding the planning commission's recommendation on proposed amendments to the non-residential table of uses to clarify definitions and classes of use. Dale.
Yes, most of this we've already discussed and so this shouldn't be new to you. You've had the table in your, um, attached to the, uh, agenda. When we, um, redid the alcohol ordinance, uh, as you'll recall, there used to be an ordinance, uh, called, uh, Diners Club. And, um, and then recently the state changed the statute to say, um, those who had a club ordinance had to decide whether they want a restaurant license or a bar establishment license. And we talked about how, uh, we already have the restaurant licenses. And so we just needed to put in our table of uses, um, where a bar establishment, uh, would be allowed. And planning commission recommended that it only be allowed in commercial with light manufacturing. And that it be a class five conditional use permit. For example, resort commercial. Uh, could you imagine, um, someone who's had a few drinks at the bar and, and tries to come out from Canyon Crossing if there was a bar in that, uh, little, um, retail space there and tried to negotiate that roundabout with pedestrians and bicyclists and, and the traffic that's there? That may be, um, uh, one of our, um, in, in that situation with a potential drunken driver, that could be, uh, one of our most dangerous intersections. Next in line, I think, might be, of course, now it's extending further west, but I think of two hundred east and Highway ninety-one. And we have C one down on the corner there. And so, um, if a bar establishment were allowed in C one, again, you would have somebody who would come out and try to negotiate. Even for a sober person, Lance keeps talking about how difficult it is to, um, turn left onto Highway ninety-one or to cross Highway ninety-one. And, and, um, and I have shared that frustration. And so, um, the planning commission thought the best place for a bar establishment would be just in commercial with light manufacturing. There's enough, enough other licenses, um, that involve food, various restaurant licenses and, and with our resorts, uh, banquet licenses, they can have room service and, and all kinds of things. I, I think we, we have a, a lot of that covered already. And so, um, that was the first change to the table of uses. Any concerns about that?
Mayor, so bar establishments in commercial light manufacturing, aren't there federal warnings that do not operate power tools while drinking?
Well, there's.
He's back.
Focus. We're writing rules. We're not talking about money.
That, that tells you how late it is. Appreciate that reminder. My legs feeling that too. Car wash, we've discussed, um, that perhaps we continue to allow, uh, what's at Lightfoot's, uh, something similar to that, but not the mechanical kind, um, that, uh, I saw a description of, um, automated car washes where the driver remains in the vehicle while the vehicle's pulled through a tunnel car wash and dried with large, loud dryers at the end. So you, you're tag and go, you're, um, quick quack.
You've seen everybody was really grateful. Was really grateful this last white desert
Yes.
storm, the car washes were busier than that.
They were, they were fun.
Mayor, I, I do have a, a serious comment on, on this one. Well, first, I would prefer to not allow car washes at all. But with what's added here in red, um, you know, it would not allow automated car washes where the driver remains in the vehicle. But St. George Car Wash down on Bluff, uh, is, is the same kind of car wash as what's envisioned here that we don't want.
Yeah.
But the driver doesn't remain in the vehicle.
You're exactly.
So.
You're exactly right.
Well, maybe it ought to be where the driver could remain in the vehicle.
Where the vehicle is, is pulled through.
Vehicles pulled through.
Where the vehicle's pulled through.
And I think one of the important things to remember is, is in a car wash, you at least have a SWIP plan. So you're, that water's going down a drain that's recycled instead of going down the river in the, you know, people washing them at home. So I think car washes.
No, that, that's not required in car washes here in Washington County.
I thought we said Lightfoot's was required that, they're doing that.
Well, they do recycle, um.
But they capture, they can't dump the grease and the stuff down the drain. Even if they don't recycle the water, they have a trap.
Yeah, but these new car washes that are going in, they have not been required to have recycling components to them.
Okay.
And that's the tragedy. Now, St. George and Washington, all those cities are trying to figure out what to do retroactively because they can use up to seventy gallons a car.
Well, but what's important for Mike is those, if you're washing it by hand, at least the sludge and the dirt and stuff is captured.
Yes.
That's what I, to me, that, instead of putting it down the river, it's captured. It's not going down our storm drains if someone's at home doing it.
So other than that concern?
Okay, so here, here's my thinking on car washes. I don't wash my own car. I have a nice car, but I don't wash my own car.
So you go to quick quack, or no?
I, I go to St. George Car Wash. And, um, and I'm, I'm not inclined probably to ever wash my own car. My best friend and neighbor, two doors down from me, Dave, he only washes his own car. He would never go to a car wash because he, he feels he's, he's treating his car better.
Yeah.
Other people may wash their car because it's an economic issue. So to me, those are the, th- those are the, the users of car washes.
There's one more.
And the people who wash at home.
In Utah, there's one more. You got the U T V, you go out riding, it's muddy, you come back, wash it before you put it in your garage. The guy out deer hunting goes out, comes back, washes his truck before he puts it in the garage. And that's.
And so they're going to do that anyway.
At the car wash though.
Exactly.
Where it's keeping the sludge and stuff is my point.
Yeah, and, but why do we need it in Ivans? There's plenty of car washes. There's plenty of car washes.
I just think it's kind of selfish not to.
Well, you don't, you, I mean, the practical point is that you don't see any of those being built. Though they're virtually all old and existing. Doesn't mean that another one couldn't come, right? If the demand's there. But I, I've wondered Dale, if, if that shouldn't be phrased, "commercial car wash", to not be confused with having, having a young, young ladies group washing cars in, in the marking lot for little fundraiser. I mean, I don't know if we wanna, we don't, I don't think we wanna cancel that kind of thing happening.
Doesn't it say a structure though? Says car wash, a structure.
With the hand operation.
Yeah, if you add, if you add commercial, you're, you're not precluding cars being washed otherwise.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, so the title would be Commercial Car Wash.
I'm, I'm just throwing that out there, Dale, does that clarify anything?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, I see.
And then Mike's, or your change that the driver doesn't have to be in that, that's a simple change. And, and remember, we're just getting the language to where you're comfortable, to where we put this to a public hearing.
Yeah.
So we don't have to decide it tonight. The next change is to eliminate golf courses. So the only golf course we would have is Black Desert in our city.
I got nailed on that today, so.
From which aspect?
Well, once again, at the league meetings, "Thought you guys weren't gonna allow any golf courses."
I, I think I forgot about the league meetings.
Well, they, they brought their own water with them and so.
That's right, that's what I said.
The next one is a definition of hotel. I modified the, the definition to fit better what we're experiencing and allow. So I struck the entrance lobby and hallway as a requirement. And just referred to a room reservation system and common check-in area. And then four, left in there four more guest rooms. So a building or buildings, because what we're approving is more of a horizontal hotel rather than the vertical. We, we limit the heights and so you can't have a common lobby and then take the elevator to the room, which our definition really described. And so I tried to modify that to where it can be several buildings, but a common room reservation system, common check-in area. And, and then you go to your different, different rooms. And to try and allow that horizontal concept.
So Dale, would Crescent Moon Inn be considered a hotel? Cause it doesn't have a common, I could see that, you know, you're more or less, in today's world, you almost don't need a check-in place. Cause they have ways that you get your key, if you ever go to, even California, went there, they have your keys in a place. You pay online, you get your keys and you go in.
Or on your phone.
Yeah, so do we need a common check-in area?
May not.
That's what I'm saying is why.
So Dale, when I saw this, the thought I had was, it, it's, it's not bad to have a definition of a conventional hotel, which is pretty close to what you actually had before. Do we want to simply add resort and use the definition that, that we have in under, as a different animal, because it is different than a hotel?
Well, we could, we could leave hotel and we could put resort hotel. We, we're still calling it kind of a hotel that, but that it's just horizontal. And, and that's how we're.
The, the only reason I wondered is, there's a chance that we could get a more conventional type of hotel here ultimately, right?
Yeah.
And, and I, I wondered since we went to great lengths to try and identify what a resort was in this last, you know, legislation we've been working on, if we ought not acknowledge that there are really two different kinds of lodging facilities. And I, I'm asking the question, if you, if you don't think we need to do that.
No, that's a good idea.
Cause they, they do, they do function slightly differently, right?
Right.
And like, like they're saying, and you're, you're really talking more kind of about Airbnb types of things where they literally come and there's, you know, they give them an access code to, to open a box and get their card key or whatever.
And, and I, and my attempt was to exclude those.
Oh.
In that, those are individually usually operated. Now, they can be commonly, you know, a, a common reservation, room reservation. But.
I think if you put common room reservation and just take off common check-in area.
Right.
Cause every, if it's used as a, not as a, it's, if the whole building's used for the same purpose, you can have one, just one check-in place and usually you can get your key.
It, it could be an Airbnb type where, because there are companies out there that use that model and use that as a common room reservation system. So instead of using Marriott Hotel as your check-in system or your room reservation system, it's using an Airbnb or, or something similar. What I'm eliminating, trying to eliminate is the individual house that's an Airbnb.
So would it be sufficient just to put hotel slash resort hotel or something like that? Cause you, you're, you're trying to include.
Well, we could have hotel, the original definition, like you said, because we may get one of those. And then have resort hotel and then have a modified definition to fit that. And, you know, remove the common check-in area. But we are requiring.
I, I don't know if this is needed, like I say, I was just asking a question.
Yeah, we are requiring all of the resorts that they have a common room reservation system. Otherwise, it's an overnight rental and they would need, need an overlay. But if they're a true resort, then they're gonna contact the room reservation system and reserve a room and, and, and when they get there, they'll, they'll be shown what their room is unless they specify like, like Black Desert will have different phases. Centiaire will have different phases with, you know, like the spas and things. They could, they could specify the type of room, you could do that. You know, and some traditional hotels as well, Marriott, some of the specialized Marriott hotels, you can, you can do that as well. But it was intentional that, to exclude the individual home Airbnb because what we're, what we're encouraging is either a traditional hotel or a resort hotel. And, and both, in both cases, there's that common room reservation system and they pay the taxes. And so you're assured of getting paid the transient room tax, whereas the individual Airbnb typically is the illegal Airbnbs that's out there. So I'll add, I'll add a separate definition for resort hotel. The next one is already in our table of uses, sexually oriented business. It only, it just referred to the statute.
Can you slide that up on the screen?
Oh, yeah, sorry. The, it just referred to the ordinance. So Title Four, Chapter Six, it just said that in the, in the different zones as well. Well, that's not helpful, that doesn't tell you, one, what type of use is it? So what process do you go through? Is that, if, if it's not specified, then I assume that Mike can just issue a permit for it. It would be the lowest class possible. We, in our ordinance, we say that it's only allowed in a commercial light manufacturing zone. But we didn't say that in the table of uses. So the table of uses now only allows it in commercial with light manufacturing as a class five conditional use.
It's gonna be a rough area down by Farley Park.
Yeah, beer, power tools. You don't wanna go there late at night.
Well, when the consultant came in.
They're parking now too at the side.
Thank goodness.
And now we're gonna add a pool, tattoo parlor over there too.
It's everywhere though.
When the consultant came in, they, they put it on, on the, one of the Haven, on the Haven parcels over by Heritage Estates. So I told Kevin, "Well, we won't have far to go to, to party at night. I'll, I'll pick you up and we'll just walk over."
Which we know you were joking, right?
Yes, I was.
There you go.
Chris might write something different, so I wanna make sure.
Then we did add tattoo parlors because those are becoming more popular and will probably get a request at some point. We had some comment, public comment that said, "Well, that should only be in a commercial with light manufacturing zone as well." Others pointed out that, you, you know, people get their eyebrows tattooed on.
So I'm thinking there's, we should have, it's a two, two-pronged deal. Cause it's, there's an estheticianist, right, who does that? And, and it's, and then there's, is that right, Carrie?
You're right.
I think it's called an estheticianist.
You're right, you're right.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm, I don't know anything about this really, cause I'm, sorry, I'm tattoo free.
Well, and I, and I.
I've got plenty of scars, but I don't have tattoos.
Well, meeting this requirement, you have none, cause you have an ink scar, was it? So that, that's what I would, I don't wanna exclude the estheticianists in the commercial areas, but I'm with the people who's putting the rest of them in the commercial light manufacturing.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if they're talking, if that's one of the, the things that are popular, which it is, people get their eyebrows done, they get their eyeliner, they do that a lot, but that's more in, by an esthetician, it's not, you don't go to a tattoo parlor to get your eyebrows put on typically. And so if, if we're talking about a tattoo parlor, we can put it in CLM. But if we're talking about maybe this esthetician thing, that could be in your C one, it could even be in your commercial neighborhood. It does, but I don't know that you want a tattoo parlor in C one or C, or in commercial neighborhood. Do you know what I mean?
Don't, don't we allow home businesses to do hair?
Yes.
And so that, you know.
They could do that in a home too.
So I would just say, maybe on this tattoo parlor, just put it in CLM with beer, power tools and sexually oriented businesses. Isn't that down towards Kenta down?
It is.
Yes.
CLM zone.
You bet.
Terry's gonna make all kinds of money there. It's by the storage units too.
And, and then in this tattoo parlor definition, just finish it off by saying, this doesn't include estheticians.
Well, we ought to verify that's the right word, cause I.
It is the right word, trust me, yeah, yeah, it's the right word. And that can be anywhere, they could do that.
Anywhere, because it could be a home business.
That's more of a, you know, people, they do facials and they add this in, people do this, so they put eyelashes on people. I mean, there's all kinds of things and it's very popular here. But it's not the same as a tattoo parlor by any, and it's not done.
Can you email me that word?
Esthetician.
Yeah, just Google that.
We could just look it up and say, who puts on, you know, permanent makeup? And that's, and it would give you.
I'm just asking you to do a little bit of research.
No, I'll do it, yeah, I think you, sometimes it's spelled with an E. No, no, I'll send it to you, I'll send you something, absolutely.
All we gotta do is throw the massage parlors out there.
I'll put an exemption.
It's CLM.
I'll put an exemption on it and, and make that change.
Massage parlors, by the way, I mean, are, a lot of folks consider as, you know, legitimate therapy. So that would be allowed anywhere, right? Or do we need to address massage parlors too?
Massage parlors anymore, they're like spas, aren't they? Isn't it where people go for massages?
True, we got spas going in.
We have spas that give massages, I don't think there's any, you know what I mean? I don't know that they call it that.
I think for the image that we're trying to create, we're, we're using the word spa.
Okay, now maybe in the old times.
But with those changes, are you comfortable putting this forth? I mean, we can still discuss it and make changes, and so if I don't get it right.
Counsel, thumbs up?
It'll just go to a public hearing.
Yes.
I think this is good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Consent agenda, a couple of sets of meeting minutes that I found to be perfection. Anybody else find something?
Nope.
Be concerned about, motion please?
I move we approve the meeting minutes from the March twenty-fourth and the.
April seventh.
April seventh meeting.
Thank you, second?
I'll second.
Move to second and that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Reports, Council, beginning with Councilmember Anderson, anything?
None, none.
Thank you. Councilmember Murphy?
I don't have anything.
And Councilmember Scott?
Unfortunately, I do, Mayor.
If it's about mosquitoes, you're dead.
No, it's, that'll be coming up next month. When I met with Springdale's Community Development Director about, talking about the Muncell book and how they're dealing with color, he also told me, sort of related to the building color issue, that one thing that Springdale is looking at doing is to, they, they currently, I think this is just for residential, they currently limit building heights to, what is it? Twenty-one, no, seventeen to, twenty-one to twenty-six feet, I think that's it. And they're thinking about reducing that to sixteen to twenty-one feet. Again, depending what part of town they're in. And, and the, the idea there is, is their interpretation of what the state did last year in, in taking away our right to control design elements for single-family and two-family homes, he said that, yes, cities have, have, have every right to control it in a development agreement if it's negotiated into a development agreement, but that is a negotiation, right? But if you change, that their take was, if, if something isn't allowed in a zone like a twenty-five foot building height, but the applicant wants a twenty-five foot building height, if you allow them that something that isn't allowed, then you don't have to negotiate design elements. You can require them to follow our design elements. That's their take on it.
Let's take that baby down to ten feet and we got a deal.
And so, so they're, I believe that their thinking was, by lowering this, one of two things will happen. Either people will build the building lower, but by doing, and, and then use whatever color they want, but it will be less intrusive in the community, cause it's lower. Or they will ask for an exception to be able to go higher, in which case then they could make the requirement that you follow their building color rules. So just, that's my.
Dale's cringing over there.
Well, I would, I would, I was just thinking, maybe you add that as a special exception. Cause you have to, in order to apply for a special exception, it has to be listed in our ordinance. And so you could say, I mean, we do have height as a special exception topic, but that's to increase heights. But maybe, maybe actually listed as a special exception and say that they could apply for the special exception and the special exception says what the, what the height is. They asked for it by applying for the special exception. And so we're not imposing it. But you have to get by that first hurdle of, you have regulated height by, by prohibiting a, a certain height of a building.
But we're doing that now?
So we currently limit it to twenty-five feet for residential. So what they're saying is they're gonna, if, they're gonna limit it to something lower than that, say the seventeen feet. But then I'm gonna come in and say, "No, no, I really wanna go twenty-two feet."
Right.
And then the city could choose to give me the twenty-two feet, but then say, "If you want the twenty-two feet, you are going to have to follow all of our design guidelines and building color, whatever."
So I say, let's get on the agenda for next meeting.
Yeah, but I don't know.
Well, it's same as our twenty-five foot.
Let me ponder it.
We have the legal expert here.
Let me ponder it.
I'm telling you, you can, you can build any of those buildings at fifteen feet.
Right, but you're still, you're still regulating height.
We can though.
I don't think height is one of those that's got taken off the table, is it? I don't think height is one of those that's got taken off the table, is it?
It is. I got a letter from the Ombudsman. Omsbudsman, how do you say it?
He said height was okay?
He sent me an email stating that height is not one of the criteria. And that's why Springdale is doing it.
We listed as a design.
It's either fourteen or fifteen. Because you still build a house in that, but it it kicks it so.
I can do a house with a ten-foot ceiling that that goes thirteen feet.
Yeah, well, I do them every day, so.
And and they would they would vanish, even stark white.
Well, we let be careful. We probably think about the mayor, because if I imagine if someone took my house style and put it up on the hillside and it could be white, because my houses are less than thirteen and a half feet. So just keep that in mind. So a flat roof might be less than a pitch roof, okay?
Okay, so seven feet.
Seven feet up and ten feet down.
Well, realistically, a twelve eleven and a half, twelve foot is the number for flat roofs.
I mean, what what's your restriction? I I've built out there. I think I couldn't go over fourteen or fifteen feet.
Foot is the as the surrounding area and ten and a half out on the edges.
There you go. That's the city standard.
Well, I don't want to make, I mean.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Yes, if you ask for a special exception, you have to come before the city council.
No, we we want to try doing it without us. I mean, right now, we regulate the city, the heights at twenty-five foot. And if the if Dale interprets what I interpreted from the email from the Ombudsman where this legislator didn't take that away from us, that's what that's what these other cities are standing on is is well, I can regulate twenty-five foot, I can regulate fifteen foot, I can regulate fourteen foot. And if you want to go higher, you have to meet this criteria.
Well, if you want to go higher, it's a special exception, but but it's going to include a development agreement, right? Because that's the.
But we might need to not do.
Can you forward that email to me? Because, you know, it's kind of I I think it's a little fuzzy when it with design guidelines as to what all was included and what wasn't. I mean, exterior colors was expressly stated. So I'd like to read their email.
And I might call him and from an outsider and just ask him how he perceives that, because that's his job, right? To interpret.
Well, I can I can give him a call. I know him pretty well.
If you just want a Xerox that I've got it right here, because Blant sent it to me. So either, you know what I mean?
Did you read that interpret that same thing for him?
You know what? I read it.
Well, let let me let let me get her one, I'll. Because there's three different emails. Because I asked him a question, another question to clarify, because I didn't want.
All right, thank you. Really briefly, I know it's late. We had our Miss Ivans pageant week, two weeks, almost two weeks ago. And Jenny and I were both there. There were eight contestants.
Me and Dennis were there, too.
Oh, I didn't see you. Oh, I.
My my niece was in.
Yes, that's right, huh? Well, anyway, it was awesome. I'll just tell you that. Eight just beautiful, smart, talented, just extraordinarily talented young ladies. And I don't know how the judges frankly could do it, but a young lady by the name of Bella Waggoner is our new Miss Ivans. Her first runner-up is, I want to say this right, Kira, Kira Campbell, I believe, is right? And a second runner-up is Avery Nickel. And Miss Congeniality is Piper Doty or Doty, D O T Y. Anyway, they're gonna come and meet the council, hopefully at our our next meeting. But, gosh, just thanks to all those who worked. It was a our pageants are just so well-done now. They move right along. You know, people aren't sitting around waiting for anything and Jennifer Horn.
She and her daughter.
And her daughter, Callie, who is a former Miss Ivans, worked so hard. And and Brittany Hollandshead, who who is Mrs. Ivans member back when, she was also helping with the workshops and so forth. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the young ladies in our community. They learned some really important skills and I've had several of them, you know, just bump into them. They said it was a great experience doing that. Learning poise and interview interview techniques and so forth.
Their talents were so different. It was amazing.
Really good.
Well, it's kind of funny is Jennifer Horn's daughter, Kelly, she got asked to be married that night.
She was proposed to on stage.
On stage was the first thing.
They're they're really going for sensationalism here.
Well, he got he got almost he got stuck in Puerto Rico and and he flew into Salt Lake at four o'clock and drove down here or something like that.
That was cool.
Mayor, I wanted to make a point about these these the royalty because the I'm a a woman that works for me at the county runs the does a lot of the junior rodeo. And this weekend, they had the special needs rodeo at the fairgrounds. And she ran the whole special needs rodeo and the and the Ivans royalty was there. And she said they were they all dressed alike. She said they were just the I she pointed them out from all the other cities. She said the Ivans royalty was just great. So kudos to them. They they did it. They did a good job with the special needs rodeo, too.
We're so lucky to have Jennifer Horn sharing this. She just does a masterful job of it. The one other thing I I want to tell you is that, you know, we had our it it's now called the Easter Egg Scramble. Because it ain't a hunt. There's no hunting.
There's no hunt.
My son timed it. It took forty-four point three seconds. Every egg, all of the ten thousand eggs to be gathered in. And almost as funny as that, and by the way, Officer.
Almond?
Yes. They they took it, they took drone footage of it. So that's going to show up on on YouTube. So you see, it's just hysterical to watch. Then they have a hunt for the adults. So my two sons included, I'm embarrassed to say, but all these guys lined the thing. They throw out a few boxes of eggs and they go in and just kill each other trying to scrape eggs. But it was a lot of fun. But here's here's what I wanted to get to. Five or ten minutes before the hunt began, one of our residents who was, I guess, lives lives nearby came up to, I don't know if it was Benny or Sarah, and handed handed her ten ten-dollar bills to put in ten of the eggs. There's ten thousand eggs. They stuffed ten of them with these ten-dollar bills.
Hopefully not for the adults.
I had two of my sons here with their families. So that was like nine grandkids. And while they're well, one of them was driving home, their boy pops open an egg and, look what I got.
So you have to know the right people, huh?
But you know what? What what awesome residents we have that somebody would go down there and do that, just not even able to see the smile on anybody's face that got one, but just knowing that somebody was gonna be surprised and happy by that. That's my report.
How many people?
Dale, first of all, you're doing good.
Yeah, I just got to watch the swelling. So this helped.
Did you have surgery today?
No.
No, last a week ago, Monday. On the eleventh. And so I've been in a little bit, probably overdid it some, which I have a tendency to do. Stubborn that way. But, yeah, I'm doing doing well. Go through this again in June on the other leg, but then it'll all be taken care of.
Awesome.
Question on, just want to clarify on the public hearings. Will everybody be here for the next meeting if we set the public hearings or do we want to divide up? I think we said water was gonna go to a ready to go to a public hearing and the table of uses go to a public public hearing.
Not sure the table of uses is gonna draw a lot of attention. Did it at the planning commission?
Um, no, you know, there was a handful that commented on it, but.
I will not be here at the next meeting and I thought I'd try to maybe phone in or zoom in, but I'll be in Botswana. It'll be three AM, so I think that's not a good idea.
Well, I think I think Mike's probably critical for the water.
I think that's true.
It's a it's a holiday anyway, Cinco de Mayo.
So we'll so we'll postpone that one for to the next meeting. But I don't see any reason to hold up the table of uses, do you?
No.
And I'll get you something tomorrow on.
I'm still worried about power tools.
That's all.
Thank you. Well. I think that brings us to the end.
I move we adjourn.
I already said it.
Already said it.
All I need is a second.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded that we adjourn.
Let's go.
Any nay votes? Well, Chris, nobody has more fun than you. That's all I can say. Thanks for paying some attention to us.